Welcome to the City Council Redevelopment Agency, October 17th. If everyone could please stand and we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Mr. Mollby, any changes to the order of the agenda? No changes this evening, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, and I see we have no report from closed session because we did not have a closed session. So we'll start with item number four, Council Communications and Announcements. Mr. Grocott, do you have anything?
Only that, as I was telling my computer next to me, I missed the tabs on our council packet. That's it.
Sorry about that.
That's right.
Okay, Mr. Royce?
Just one item. Lions Club every year has a crab feed and a tri-tip. This weekend at Mahaney Hall, starting at 5:30, I believe dinner is at 6:30, they will be hosting their annual tri-tip dinner. Good, good feed, lots of it, so try to get there. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Grisilli?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lewis?
One other thing I thought I'd mention, just make sure everybody knows, it's kind of exciting that a native son of San Carlos is playing in the World Series this week, Daniel Descalzo, homegrown on the Little League fields of San Carlos, and he's been playing for St. Louis Cards all year, and then the World Series. Not many times you can say that, so whatever your affiliation, wish Daniel well, and we hope he has a great series, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. I have two announcements given to me by citizens. One is there is a panel discussion on Saturday, 22nd, called Artichokes to Zucchini. It's about sustainable food practices in San Mateo County. It's October 22nd, room 10, 195, at the CSM College Center, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And then the second is, we have a free bicycle safety workshop that'll be held at the San Carlos Library on the second floor, again, on October 22nd, and that will be from 11:00 a.m. till 12:30 p.m., and that's put on by commute.org in conjunction with the city here. So with that, we will move on to item number five, public comments. This is for items not on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. We will start with Pat Bell, followed up by Scott Marsters. Okay, Pat will pass. Mr. Marsters? I'll move you over to fire, then, Pat.
Thank you. Scott Marsters, San Carlos. I know later on in the evening, you will be discussing recology and the rates, and I would like to discuss another aspect of recology. There have been several complaints I've gotten in my neighborhood, the first of which is noise, and the concern that the dumpsters have been emptied at 4:00 in the morning. It has become an issue for a lot of people who are woken up at 4:00 in the morning with the dumpsters clanging, and the good news is, they come back about 15 minutes later and do the other one. So just as you're getting back to sleep, they wake you up a second time. And even in, though that's one street over in the industrial area, there are also trucks that come well before 6:00 in the morning, and so I would like to encourage you at some point to take up this issue and consider looking at the noise ordinance, which actually gives them essentially an exemption from the noise ordinance, and to look and see whether it's appropriate to revoke that, well, change that noise ordinance in such a way that they cannot start within 200 feet of a residential area before 6:00 a.m. Seems very reasonable to me. The second item is that if you actually ever follow one of the recology trucks, doesn't matter which one, down the street, you will see that recology is becoming one of the number-one polluters in our city because the trucks do not actually empty the garbage cans into the trucks completely. And so if you go down the street where they've been, you will see that there's, whether it's garbage, whether it's recycling, whether it's compost, usually, one out of, say, every five to 10 houses, there's a pile of something there. And so knowing that we've got guidelines coming along that will deal with the pollution and stuff that enters our streams, this is something that I think we need to address sooner rather than later. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsters. I have no other speaker slips for items not on the agenda, so we'll be moving on to item number six, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be acted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Does anyone wish to remove anything? Okay, we'll go with the motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'm good.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item seven, reports to council. Reports to council, updates on key projects by city department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. First up, we have item 7A, report on new San Carlos Fire Department by our Fire Chief, Jim Skinner, and our Deputy Chief, Stan Moppen. I'm gonna keep using you guys' full names until the crowd gets to know you a bit better.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Klein and councilmembers. Actually, tonight, I'm the first time in front of you that I can actually say that I am now officially your Fire Chief, and so I'm very proud of that. October 1st, we started, and we're very, very happy about that. We're gonna give you an update tonight, myself and Deputy Chief Stan Moppen. So Stan, I'll start off the presentation, and I'll take over.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Stan Moppen, your Deputy Fire Chief. This evening, we're gonna give a short update on the first 17 days of the Fire Department. As you're all aware, on October 1st, we had the actual swearing-in and the official start date of the new Fire Department. At 7:00 that morning, we did a swearing-in ceremony and a badge-pinning, which is a very formal part of the Fire Department process in starting a new organization such as this. On that day, we also had a short reception for the public, and many of you were there, and we greatly appreciate your support on that day, the landmark day for the Fire Department. The rest of the day was followed by an all-day orientation for the entire Fire Department, getting them up to speed on protocols, procedures, how things would work in the Fire Department. It was our first day to have the entire Fire Department together as a group and be able to address them as one. There's a picture of your new Fire Department, and we'll talk about staffing here shortly, and that is the staffing as it was on October 1st. As we moved along, we were able to do some hiring, as you know, as a mix of former Belmont-San Carlos employees and new hires from the area, so we had to do some training with the new hires to get them up to speed with the San Carlos Fire Department demands. And we did some training prior to October 1st with some of these employees, and then we continued to do training at this time for about another week or so till we get them fully online on shift. As we see this, again, the new employees were hired ahead of time of October 1st. Since October 1st, we've continued the training with a mix of shift assignments and them training also on their days off, and they've continued to do that again to the end of this week. We also additionally have still some openings in the Fire Department that we're still working actively on hiring and interviewing people for those positions. Since that time, since the Fire Department's been in service operationally, we have continued to meet or exceed the response times set forth by the county standards, and that is a 6-minute and 59-second response time, and we are well underneath that response model at this time. Nothing's changed. We've continued to provide the same service level, if not better, since the opening of the department. We're averaging about 5.5 calls per day right now, a mix of, again, EMS, medical, fire alarms, vehicle accidents. We had one small fire at the transfer station on recology, and we took care of that with no problem, but we're meeting our, about a 5.5 average per day. With, there's still some voids in our staffing, we're having to do some daily staffing adjustments to keep the fully-staffed Fire Department working each day. We've also been using, looking at our performance measures for the Fire Department, and we're currently gonna start using mirror to what we do in Redwood City, and those are basically based on response times, keeping our response times low, reducing false alarms, false fire alarms, which are very costly to the Fire Department in the sense that we respond to more occupancies with continued false alarms. That obviously has an impact on the resources. And then, of course, measuring fire loss within the jurisdiction as time goes on. And the important thing about fire loss is not so much measuring the fire loss, but measuring what was saved as a result of the operations of the Fire Department. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Fire Chief Skinner.
Thank you. So you saw us out in the public, that's our banner, our new banner, you know, representing the San Carlos Fire Department. We were at the Art and Wine Festival, and we got a lot of positive comments about the booth, our presence, being out there, and we had a lot of volunteers from our new firefighters that, you know, took their day and time to come down and help staff the booth along with the CERT members. So we're very excited about that. The reaction to us was very, very welcoming, and it's something that we're gonna definitely continue. We've already had, even before we got, started the department, we had station tours scheduled for Stations 13 and 16. So the public's out, they know, you know, we're there, they know how to go online and schedule the tours. They're out there in the schools visiting. It's Fire Prevention Month, by the way, so we're out there in full force. Along with everything else, all the training we're doing, we're out there at the schools and sending the messages. So this was a great day, the weather was perfect, and, you know, they had, we had this banner, another banner, one of our fire engines out there, and the public just loved it. So technology transition to get a Fire Department up and running. You know, we worked with our, in Redwood City, RIT, and got connectivity together between the two cities. We completed that, that was something that we had to walk through, we weren't sure how that was gonna work, but it worked out fine. Along with that, there's, you know, the technology enhancement that we're talking about are different reporting systems, so the firefighters that came over from Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department have to learn the new system that we're utilizing in Redwood City, and we're optimistic that that, the RMS system that we're gonna be using will be able to give us data and reports on a quarterly basis that we can share with you. We're used to the system that we've been running these reports for years now, and we're just gonna continue it with San Carlos. Redwood City, the city of Redwood City's processing the payroll for San Carlos Fire Department, glad to hear that the firefighters were paid this last week, so they're very excited about that, as are we, and so the payroll, that whole process is due to everybody, so we're walking through that also, and soon, all San Carlos employees will be, the payroll will be processed by Redwood City. Data from the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department's been transferred, or in the process of transferred over to the San Carlos Fire Department, and we're looking at that data also. A lot of the technology is new to some of their employees, and so we're trying to work hard to make sure that they're comfortable with it, we get the data we need to get, we're reporting the way that will capture the information that will be valuable to run reports in the future. So where are we going in the future? You know, we wanna increase our community involvement, public outreach, we wanna be part of the fabric of the city, the face, you know, I tell all the new firefighters, I says, "You know where you are now?" "I don't know, what am I? You're a firefighter that's in San Carlos, and you are the face of the San Carlos Fire Department." And they beam with a big smile on their face, and it's great to see, but they're gonna be out there. They're gonna be out there on, well, we're gonna have an open house, we haven't scheduled that yet, but we're looking at sometime next month to have an open house at the downtown station, and invite the public to meet the firefighters, come through the station, see what we're all about. We're gonna do the Goblin Walk on October 28th, Santa's arrival by helicopter, December 3rd, it's kind of exciting, and breakfast with Santa, and meet your firefighters on December 28th. So, you know, it's a lot of stuff coming up, but in between this, they're gonna be doing all the training, visiting the schools, and having station visits, so they're gonna be out there, they're gonna be the face of San Carlos Fire Department, we're very excited about this. A lot of work has gone into getting us to the point where we're at right now. The attitudes and the optimism from firefighters is very reassuring. I'm very, very proud of how they've embraced it, they wanna learn about how we've done things in Redwood City, what they wanna do, I wanna give them the opportunity to make the changes that they wanna make to build their department, because indeed, it is the firefighters of San Carlos Fire Department, it's theirs, to build the way they want and what the community wants. So with that, we have, if you have any questions?
No, thank you very much, Chief and Deputy Chief. So we'll start with questions, Mr. Royce?
I have none, thanks.
Mr. Grisilli?
Chief, how many openings do we have now, and do we have applicants in the waiting room?
We have, presently, we have five people in the backgrounds, we have three openings, five people in the backgrounds, and we have five openings. But we're staffing with, like Chief Moppen was talking about, moving people around.
Sure, I understand. So we expect, hopefully, within 30 days, then, to have?
Very optimistic, within 30 days, we'll have a full staff.
Okay, 60 days, we'll have a full staff.
60, by this time next year, we'll have a full staff.
Thanks, Chief.
Mr. Royce?
So I get asked, yeah, quite a bit, okay, so we have our own Fire Department, so what's changed in the main? Question is, so how many firefighters, paramedics do we have? So at the end of, say, 30 days from now, where will we be versus where we were three months ago with the JPA as far as staffing for our two stations? Do you know that?
The Department's staffing's gonna be 21 total, so six fire captains, and the balance will be firefighters and paramedics. The difference will be that Station 13, where the alternating of the truck and the engine over the years, Station 13 will be staffed with four firefighters. Now, one of those firefighters is also our relief firefighter in case we have vacancies, whether it's vacation, sick leave, or so on, so we don't incur any extra funding for the overtime or coverage or any of this, but the plan is that it'll be staffed with four at Station 13 and three at 16. So that's the main difference, is it'll be consistent at 13, it won't be every year switching back and forth.
Okay, great, thank you. And one other, yeah, and one other question here would be, you know, the things like we made some changes over the course of past year or two with the sheriff, we get a quarterly report, there's metrics that we get, a lot of the same, you know, what the responses times are, what their clearance rates are, you don't have that, but, and so, we, in the last year of studying, looking at various fire options, we've also got from our consultant that with the JPA, a lot of the reporting was weak, and that, you know, there were things like on fire, but how many were false alarms, and there wasn't a lot, there could be a tremendous improvement with the amount of data. So I would just hope and maybe get your response that, I'm sure you guys do it well, I think you have some very formal, what the metrics are for the Fire Department, what, how we measure that every quarter and how we're doing, and it's not to get an A+, it's basically to get ABCs and Ds, so it's basically to know what, how you benchmark other cities, how we're doing now, and how it's changing over time, and how we react to those performance measures. So you could do a little response, but I'm just looking forward, I think this council is very much, especially where we have other people doing businesses, from even mowing our lawns, we're very, very important that the customer, the taxpayer, the resident gets able to have input, and we're continually able to improve our process.
There's, on an annual basis, at least in our department, we've had the experience where we respond to a national survey from either USFA or NFPA, National Fire Protection Association or the United States Fire Administration. These are, it's question-based about how many fires you've had over the year, what were the loss, how many fire injuries, firefighter personnel injuries, a myriad of questions. It's very lengthy. We fill that out every year to give our department the data that we can look at, but we can streamline that, we can use the same format for San Carlos. It is gonna be a little tricky, starting from zero, to, you know, where we're gonna go. So, you know, tomorrow will be better than yesterday, and, you know, and next year, we'll have more data, because the more data that we have, you know, the more accurate it's gonna be to predict where we're gonna be. But absolutely, that's something that with our reporting system, we can draw that data out of it. And we're gonna build the matrix for that right now, and that, so we have the templates to be able to do those reports. So, yeah, we anticipate doing those on a quarterly basis and reporting back to you.
Great, thank you. And just the last comment, I'd love to see where you commented on the community involvement. I wrote down Art and Wine, I think we got a lot of press having our firefighters there, our new firefighters, and CERT, and training, and all sorts of things being part of the community, really a key part of this.
Thank you. And one of the things I neglected is, and thank you for reminding me about the CERT, and I didn't put it in there because we haven't scheduled it yet, but in the spring, we're gonna have a CERT class, and we're trying to do a CERT, a combined CERT class with Redwood City and San Carlos residents. So, you know, we'll integrate the two, they're right next door to each other, there's no reason why we can't do that, so we're excited about that also.
Thank you.
Mr. Grocott?
First, I just wanted to thank the Chief for his report, and just make a note to self, Art and Wine is always a nice weekend. I think we've been having that for, I don't know how many years, and we've never had bad weather that I can remember, so you can plan on it.
Will be noted.
Yeah, there you go. And I just wanted to echo what the Chief said about the attitude is reassuring. Before we actually hit the start date, I had talked to some of the firefighters in advance of the start date, the guys that were gonna be going over, and they were excited about, you know, putting everything behind them and just moving forward, they were excited about that, and so I just wanted to echo that. I don't really have any questions, but just a couple of comments. One of the things that I'm looking forward to see, seeing how it works, is when we get into budgeting for the future, equipment replacement schedules, some of those details and policies, looking forward to seeing that. And then also, how things are gonna work with our first hazmat call or our first call where we need the truck service. I'm gonna be curious to see how that will work out. I'm sure it will, but I'm gonna be curious to see how that happens. And then, lastly, I just wanted to, you know, drop a note, I've talked to the city manager about this, I think it's great what we're doing, I think one of the things we've talked about up here that we don't wanna lose momentum on is future consolidation. This is great what we're doing, but I think we're gonna have to look two, three years, at least no more than five years out, and look for additional consolidation, and so I think what we're doing here with this model is gonna be supremely important as an example that, yes, this can work, and this is how.
Okay. The only things I have to say, Chief, is I've gotten the same reaction that most of the council members have, that especially for the guys who came over and the new people, that there's a lot of excitement, and all of the firefighters I've spoken to have commended the two of you, and said that they were very happy with the management they have, and they feel there's a great sense of leadership in the Fire Department, so I think that's a testament to both of you of how well the job you're doing.
Thank you.
So, thank you, we have some public comments, and we'll take that, but thank both of you for coming.
Thank you.
All right, so for public comment, we have Pat Bell.
I went to the ceremony at 7:30 in the morning, shows my dedication, 'cause I don't go anywhere at 7:30 in the morning. And I wanna welcome our new firefighters, the ones who came over from BSCFD, and the ones who have come from various and sundry places. I'm very sorry that our city and our Fire Chief didn't see fit to go through the whole pinning ceremony, which, as he said again tonight, is very important, and an important part of the culture of being a firefighter. I understand that we've taken 45 minutes out of his priceless day of training, but I think he could've moved 45 minutes of that stuff to the next priceless training day. The firefighters were not introduced individually to us, their pinning was all done like herding cattle. Okay, hurry up, get up here and pin whoever you're supposed to pin. I just thought that was horrible, it was rude to the firefighters, and it was rude to the public, those of us who did get up at 7:30 in the morning. It just did not strike me as a good way to reach out to the community and bring us all together and have a nice, warm, fuzzy feeling. It was, okay, we hired you guys, you're gonna do what we tell you, we're gonna tell you the niceties when we get around to it, but I don't have time right now. And the comments I've heard are about the Fire Chief, he's a straight and narrow guy. Everything is by the book. I don't know what the book says about when you get pinned, but evidently, it's not imperative to get it done first thing.
Hey, Pat, we're gonna need you to wrap up. Oh, thank you very much, Pat. Okay, moving on to item 7B, update on PG&E hydrostatic testing, and for the councils now, we have two members from PG&E here who can answer any questions that Mr. Moore cannot.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Brian Moore, Assistant City Manager, wanted to give you a brief update on the PG&E hydrostatic testing work in San Carlos. As some of you know, last year, after the San Bruno fire incident, city staff and Council Member Royce, who was the mayor last year, met with PG&E to discuss the natural gas pipelines that are in San Carlos. There's one in the industrial area and one that runs along Britton Avenue. After that meeting, there was a workshop held with the community, everyone was invited to hear a briefing from PG&E, and also to get an update from them on the pipelines in San Carlos and to have all of their questions answered. We also, between that time and the testing, have provided a series of reports to the city council, and during that meeting with city staff and city management and then Mayor Royce, there was a discussion about testing options, and it was noted that one of the options that was available to San Carlos was the so-called hydrostatic testing, where the pipelines are cleaned out and the pipelines are pressurized. San Carlos requested that such testing be conducted on the pipelines in San Carlos, and that's the process that's now underway. Giving you an update tonight also on our public outreach work with PG&E. PG&E has provided information to the affected residents, there have been informational flyers from PG&E to the residents that are nearest the pipeline testing work. There was an open house held on September 7th at Trinity Presbyterian Church for the residents in the area of the testing along Britton Avenue. During the city's permit process, PG&E was required, as a condition of getting their permit, to provide notices to residents that are within 500 feet of the testing work, and PG&E is also required to provide information contacts to residents during the testing phase, which has been done. Since the testing has been launched, PG&E has been providing information on a regular basis to both the city of San Carlos and the county, and the city has been working with PG&E to distribute this information. We've issued seven project updates from the start of the project until just late last week. We've been using the city's e-notify service, the website, Facebook, Twitter. The county has also used their SMC alert for some of the updates as well. In terms of the testing process and how the hydrostatic testing works, the steps are to put the pipeline out of service, to provide gas to residents from neighboring pipelines, the gas is then vented from the lines, the lines are mechanically cleaned, once they're cleaned and dried, they're filled with water, they're pressurized to test, in some cases, that's up to eight hours of testing, and then after the lines are confirmed as in good working order, they're emptied, dried from the water, and put back into service. It's also, let me go to the next slide. In terms of the progress to date, the project started on September 30th, was one week later than the original schedule. The lines have been taken out of service, the venting of the natural gas from the pipelines was achieved. We did work with PG&E to send out several notices in advance of the venting, because in a neighboring community, the residents were unaware of the venting, and apparently there's some noise and smells associated with that, so we wanted to make sure everybody in San Carlos had advanced notice, which they did. During the work, the pipeline is also isolated by removing the valves, and as part of putting the pipelines back in service, new valves will be added, and to answer one of the questions that we have heard from the council, my understanding is that while the valves will be replaced in this phase of work, next year in 2012, PG&E's intent is to replace at least some of the valves in San Carlos with the automatic shut-off valves that you've asked about. Another question that came up last year was the question of whether or not the pipeline section in San Carlos could be inspected using a so-called smart pig, a pipeline inspection gauge, and this allows for testing by inserting a probe into the line in the future rather than the current process, which is a bit more involved. In PG&E's work to date, they discovered that they were able, through upgrading the valves on the Line 147 in San Carlos, to convert it to a smart pig installation, so in the future, that portion of the line will in fact be able to- So in the future, that portion of the line will in fact be able to be inspected in the future by a probe, and we think that that's great news, is that will facilitate more frequent testing if needed. In terms of the actual testing, and again, as the mayor said, both Jim Cogan from PG&E and the project supervisor here tonight, and they can give you a little more detail, but as of last week, testing on three of the segments were slated to start very eminently. Section T42 from 280 to Crestview was scheduled to start on Friday. 43A from Crestview to Britton-Milano was scheduled to start on Sunday and Monday today. And Section 43B, Britton-Milano to Britton Old County, was scheduled to start next week. So those are the highlights, and again, I'll invite you to talk to Mr. Cogan and the project supervisor to get into a bit more detail if you wish.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any questions from the council members from Mr. Moore or the members from PG&E?
I have a couple of questions. One is, during hydrostatic testing, if there's some sort of a faulty seal, like some leakage or something, how's it detected if it's mid-line?
Turn it over to mine. President.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jim Cogan. I also have invited Tim Bellinghausen, who is our gas superintendent for the peninsula, to come and give some answers. And answers like that, Councilmember Lewis, of more technical nature, I will defer to my colleague, Mr. Bellinghausen.
So, good evening. So what we end up doing is we actually put pressure onto the system, so we identify if we notice a drop in pressure, for one. And also, what we actually do is we canvass the area, identify if we notice any water seepage, which would give indication that there is a leak in the system. So it's through, again, a visual survey for looking for water, and again, watching gauges that actually identify pressure into the system.
So if the pressure drops a little bit, but the pipe's under asphalt somewhere, then is there just greater excavation that then has to take place?
Then there's additional investigation to pinpoint exactly, identify and isolate where that is, and so far, we've been successful. So we haven't had that issue arise yet.
And then my only other question is, how's the history in the San Carlos gas pipeline? You know, I know the paperwork in the San Bruno pipeline has, from what I understand, proven to be sort of, you know, a mystery as to when it was really done, who did the work and so forth. I'm just curious, how's the paperwork on the San Carlos pipeline when the welding installation is done on the pipes?
So I don't have all that paperwork in front of me to identify the condition of all of the documentation for everything here in San Carlos, but what I can say is T42 and T43 did pass successfully, and we're moving ahead with T43B. I think it's actually moving ahead schedule, it says here October 24th, but I do believe we're pulling that forward. So as far as the hydrostatic test goes, we've been successful. As far as the other documentation, I can get that for you, but I don't have it available right now.
I'm just curious, it'd be nice to know the history, and I know that's the first thing that comes up when there's a problem, so just, and that was a question on PG&E's paperwork. Curious. Thank you.
Mr. Griselli?
I guess the only question I have is, 280 to Crestview, you're not working on Edgewood.
That's where it is, at 280 in Edgewood. It goes from 280 in Edgewood to Crestview.
But I haven't seen anything torn up from 280 on Edgewood to Crestview. That's my question. I'm confused on where that prop, Mr. Moore, do you know where it is? I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
Where the spots are.
Yeah, where the spot is? Because I haven't seen anything.
And I think part of that might be that Tim can explain how, when we do the hydrostatic test, one end doesn't have a lot of activity, because it's just capping the end of the pipe, so you wouldn't necessarily see it there.
Yeah, so one end, like, Jim pointed out-
Well, can you tell me where it is physically? Where are you testing? Where are you doing any work? You're not doing anything on Edgewood, unless you're, 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 hetch-atchies the folks down the road on Edgewood, I assume.
That's correct. So it's actually up in the SFPUC watershed area.
Okay.
It's very difficult to see from-
No, that's fine. I just asked you, it says 280 to Crestview, and I'm going, not in my neighborhood.
You can see it from Pogus Ridge.
Okay, thank you. Someone who hikes.
And I can also clarify there, Mr. Griselli, there's a, as you go down Crestview, there's a cul-de-sac there.
Yeah, but that's a different one.
That different?
Is that a different project?
That is, that is the other end of that.
That's the other end. Okay, fine. I got that part. I just was confused on-
So if, you know, as Councilmember Groddick was saying, if you go up and take the-
It's not a problem. I just asked, because on Edgewood, there's not, I'm not complaining, because if you flock up Edgewood, like the folks are hetch-atchies, it's a big issue.
Councilmember, if you're asking for a tour, I would be happy to.
Okay, Mr. Royce?
Helicopter.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, just one question, but first to come, I want to thank Jim for getting back to me. I know I asked a question, and it was related to, you know, meetings with Jackie Speer and San Bruno, these automatic valves. We don't have any in our county. And next year, we will have some in our town, as Brian mentioned. That's great. But I kind of came up with another question, because our fire department is here. I know one of the issues, of course, that we brought up in some of these meetings that I was in, was access to the valves and access to maps. What's the status of where we are now with our fire department? They're right here. Do they have information of where these pipelines are, and would they have access to turn these valves off if needed to be?
So they do have access to where the location of the lines. In fact, I was going to take this opportunity and invite the chief and deputy chief to our March Public Safety Awareness Briefing. We do a briefing for all first responders. We also have transmission maps that we can provide to you, and we've provided to any jurisdiction that has asked, and those have the valve locations on them. So the first responders know how to, know where the valves are. Not that they would operate them, because that's actually very, that takes a great deal of training and ongoing training, but it's very helpful for first responders to know where those valves are, so they can stage their equipment, knowing that our folks will have to get there and turn the valves if necessary.
Through the chair, isn't there, and maybe the chief can respond to this, geographic information system, GIS system, that's part of all, you know, all this that shows, all the essential, where all the utilities and everything is, that's all into one system that I believe all public safety can access during these things? That's my impression of the way it works across the county.
Okay. Mr. Groddick?
My comments are somewhat a, sort of tagging on, if you will, to what others have said. One is, I'll just tag on to what Mr. Royce was saying about gas lines, and I know you're here to talk about gas lines, but I just, a reminder to the council and you guys, because you're from PG&E, we just had the, I think it was the 10th anniversary, it was, of the Oakland Hills fire? And so there was a lot of coverage on that, on the news, and the start of that fire was overhead power lines, one of the major lines going down and sparking and causing that fire. And I think that's another area, we're looking now at pipelines, of course, gas pipelines, but I think that's another area to be aware of. Of course, you guys know your lines, and then you just talked about the fire department. I think it's good for them to know too, where are your major transmission lines where something like the Oakland Hills fire could occur in our area? Because we have similar conditions here with, you know, wildlands right adjacent to homes and apartments and so forth, and so that would be something worth looking at as well. The question that Mr. Lewis asked about the paperwork, mine's a similar question to that, is have we ever had any major construction on or over these major gas lines going through San Carlos? Because my understanding is, part of the San Bruno issue was construction that happened over these lines and potentially damaged the lines. I know, maybe you don't want to say anything about that because of legal things going on related to that, but that's my understanding from reading in the paper, and I'm wondering if we ever had any kind of, any of that kind of activity in San Carlos over or on these lines.
So none that I'm aware of, but again, nothing that I think would have compromised integrity of our infrastructure, but again, I'm not aware of all the activities that have taken place around our facilities. I do know that we do patrol the lines, and we don't have anything what we call overbuild. We don't have any facilities that are over our facilities right now, but insofar as has any other work been around it? Again, you know, I can only speak from the inspections that we've done, that the system seems sound, and we're not aware of any.
Okay. And then my last question has to do with, we're talking about major lines, of course. What's the risk factor with the arterials that come off of these? And if there was a leak, you know, we're testing the major lines, what about these arterials if they had a leak, or if construction happened over them that caused a leak, and we had an event? What's the risk factor there?
So the risk factor, if there was an event, or the causation and the actions that we would take to prevent and minimize and mitigate the event? I guess I'm-
More the former and less the latter? Just what could we expect to be the extent of damage or-
Again, it would all depend, and you know, this is a hypothesis, right? So we're just trying to take a look. So in the event where it took place, you know, we would take quick and immediate action, and we do have isolation points. As point out, we do have a new valve, and we're going to do valving, so we should be able to minimize any kind of impact. But again, until we get the automation, and you know, we're still going to go through the whole manual valving system in the event if we had a, I guess you would want to call it a catastrophe or a catastrophic event. So we do have plans in place, you know, if not for every little segment of what happens, but in the event, we do have an emergency response plan and team around all of that. So you know, we would mitigate it. Again, to go and say exactly what would that look like, you know, I really couldn't tell you. But we do have plans to address it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Groddick. I have nothing. My councilmembers covered everything, and I just want to thank both of you for coming.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay. We'll be moving on to item 8A, which is unfinished business, consideration of approving amendments to the city's strategic plan and six-month objective matrix. We have 10 speaker slips for this spot. I can imagine you all are here for the same thing. So after Ms. Mendenhall does her presentation, we will take public comment. You'll be given two minutes. If you keep your discussion succinct, and if someone says what you were going to say before them, just try to echo those thoughts, so we can get through it in a timely manner. Okay, Mrs. Mendenhall?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is an update on the city's strategic plan. On August 29th, the council met with the city manager and department directors for the 12th time to discuss the city's strategic issues and goals. The city council formally adopted this strategic plan at their September 12th meeting. Communication of the progress on our objectives is an important part of the strategic plan, and this report will serve as your first monthly report. Although this is only the first update report, there are seven objectives that have been completed, including the following. Provide a report to the city council on dissolution process of the current fire JPA. Present to the city council an update on police services. Present a plan to the city council on moving police dispatch to the county. Begin fire services for the San Carlos Fire Department. Complete Loryolo Park Playground Development Project and Hold the Ribbon Cutting. Present to the city council for consideration of policy on electronic communications and devices. And present to city council for consideration a city manager newsletter for distribution to the community. So in summary, we've had seven items completed in our first month, and all remaining items are on target. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Groddick?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. So we will go to public comment, and since many of you haven't spoken here before, if you could just give us your name and your city of residence when you start your public comments, and then I will flag you down when we get to two minutes. So I'll call a couple up at a time. We're going to start with Vera Harrington, and then we'll have Glenn Gelenau after that.
Good evening, Mayor Klein and City Council members. My name is Vera Harrington, and I understand that the City Council of San Carlos is interested in the ICLI program, and I wanted to express some concerns and fears that I've read and also heard about. And I would wonder if I could support an open meeting, so that there is a discussion of this program, and that we could better understand and more fully understand what it's all about. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have Glenn Gelenau, and then Carol Magro.
Good evening, Mayor Klein, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again tonight. As you know, I've been before, counsel before, also requesting that the city put on the agenda for open debate the city's membership in ICLI. I think that the community deserves an opportunity to hear pros and cons regarding the membership. I know, Mr. Mayor, you've referred me to some of my other political leaders, and I must say, this is a city contract. The responsibility lies between yourself and council, and I think that the public deserves an open hearing with pros and cons at the issue.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn. Next up, we have Carol Magro, and then Doug Tuzini. Is that right, Paul?
I understand that ICLI is useful to the city, and I understand, having read something about it, that they offer you a service that's really useful. Unfortunately, I think that it was probably presented to you in a way that hid, maybe a hidden agenda. And having read a little bit about it, it occurs to me that there are pieces and connections and places it's going that we probably don't want to go, ways that take power away from you and give it to a higher authority that leaves people in the community and you, our representatives, sort of out of the loop. And as a result of that, I think it's really important that you, as our representatives and for our city, that we do find out a little bit more about it. So I support that idea. Okay?
Thank you. Next, we have Doug Tuzini, and then Mario Pellegrini.
Gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I understand that the city of San Carlos is now a member of this organization, ICLEI, I believe it is. And it's my concern that the organization may have undue influence over the city and some of their goals and directions. I don't know nothing about this organization. You are the elected representatives of the residents of San Carlos. I would hope that you would dispense with the power to this organization very sparingly. So I would think more comment, more open public comment on the organization and their goals and how it reflects on San Carlos, I think would be appropriate sometime in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Mario Pellegrini, followed by Susan Hart.
I'm concerned that we have a lot of legislation coming from the state, from the federal government, and in this case, we have it coming from the United Nations. And so we have a constitution that protects us in many ways, but the United Nations is a peace body, bringing the countries of the world together to discuss peace and avoid war. But when legislation comes down, there's not necessarily a United States of America that's their objective and goal. It can be put in a lot of flowery language, but these are the things that are going to hit the road right here with gentlemen like yourselves, who are responsible for the perhaps excessive regulation or a lack of regulation. And so I think the thing we want to do is have public opinion, public debate, access to a complicated legislative activities that are happening, and that'll affect our lives.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Susan Hart, followed by Virginia Roush.
Hello, my name is Susan Hart, and I live in Menlo Park. I also have heard about ICLI, and to my knowledge, the way that it's been applied in other cities, and it is going to be very widespread, is that it puts under central planning or central control and takes away a lot of your local control. And that couldn't be good for any city, let alone San Carlos. I'm not sure whether my city is going to be included or not. That's something that I need to bring up. But I do think that we need to have open discussion for the inclusion and open debate, and much more information, because I think that there are a lot of people that do not understand where really the issue lies, what's, what are the components, what is in it? And as Randy Royce said earlier, I know that you think it's important to have public comment and public inclusion, and I do too. So I think that I'm asking for it to be on the agenda, to be discussed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Virginia Roush, followed by Nina Pellegrini.
Hello, I am Virginia Roush. I'm a new homeowner here in San Carlos, and I just recently found out- found out about this ICLI or ECLI. I would really like a lot more information on this, it seems like it needs to be up for discussion and I just think that we need to have some input, so I'm just asking you to put that on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Nina Pellegrini, followed up by George Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor Klein and council members. I'm here again to ask you to put this issue of ICLI in the agenda item. I have read a lot about ICLI and it's something, as everybody has said, it would take powers away from you guys and I don't think you guys want to do that. As a person who has gone through a lot in my life, from different countries and different governments, I think that what we need is transparency in government and that's one, the one thing I'm asking you guys to do and I think that you, Randy Royce has said, being transparent and we need to make the people understand what we are voting on and what you are doing and have everybody together to make a decision as if you want to continue to be in ICLI or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. George Robinson, followed up by Bob Cohen.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, as you said, I'm George Robinson and like others here, I have a concern about the organization, ICLI. It seems to have developed a relationship with many communities around the Bay Area and across the country and a lot of things that are coming to light are giving concern to property owners and I, like the others, would like to see you schedule an open discussion so the property owners could understand what the relationship is between ICLI and the San Carlos community and how that might influence the planning of the community, the zoning, the permitting and so on, which would then have an impact on the property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Bob Cohen.
Mayor Klein and City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bob Cohen, I'm a oceanographer and certified consulting meteorologist and I'm also concerned about the proposal to put, just for San Carlos to join as a member of ICLI. This is a significant and untrivial commitment by the city which needs to be put on the agenda for open discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move into discussion, first, if anyone has any questions for staff about any of this. Okay, same on them, we'll go to discussion. Mr. Grocott?
Well, I think it's a simple request to have this put on the agenda. After seeing some members of the public at an earlier meeting bring it up, I brought the idea up from the dais, I don't understand why we're even discussing it as part of the strategic planning, I mean, I didn't, I've never gone through that process before, meaning since being on council and since adopting the strategic planning process, we have added things to our agenda without really waiting for the night that we review our strategic planning and so forth, but here we are and, you know, we're looking at the strategic plan, I think we, the staff has shown us that we've accomplished a lot in the first month and a lot of things are taken off. I don't really see a lot of staff time involved in putting this on the agenda, we got into this, membership pretty simply and easily without, of course, any discussion about it, so I think we could just as easily put it on the agenda and have a discussion and take a look at our membership, whether we want to continue or not. And my last comment on this is I went to the ICLI website and right there, on their website, they talk about that part of their idea is to have a kind of a grassroots, local up involvement on the issues that they espouse and so why not start with membership in ICLI as a local discussion to begin with? We never had that and we just happened to kind of fall into it, I think. I don't even think any of us were quite aware of how we got into it, I know I wasn't, I had to, when folks started asking me about it, I vaguely remembered something about ICLI, I called the city manager and said, are we a member, if so, how did we become a member and he had to actually not answer me right away because he wasn't city manager when it happened and so he took a little time to get back to me and said, yeah, this is when it was done and how it was done and so here we are. But again, I would just think this is a pretty simple request to make this addendum to our strategic plan.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion with that addendum?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we add on our agenda for our strategic plan to include an agenda item at a future council meeting that we look at our ICLI membership and whether we wish to continue it.
So can I add that, I'll get it in like the second, but can we just talk about the language of it? I would think it would, everybody's asking perfectly appropriate questions about this and we absolutely should have a discussion about it, make sure everybody's, you know, we all know what we're a part of, I think there's some fear-based questions that staff could start to answer perhaps immediately, which is, are we subject to the authority of this, you know, being a membership, there's, I'm sure there's pros and cons that staff's already looked at and, but there's questions and they're good questions to ask, so what I would suggest is we have staff, just do a staff report on the pros and cons of our, the membership in ICLI, what it offers to us and, and what, I mean, there's some good questions, are we subject to their authority, what's the relationship between the city, is there a hidden agenda and so we just sort of can get that in the report, have a discussion amongst council, with the public and go next. Whether or not it's a membership to, you set it up as, should we or should we not, I'm sure that's something council will consider in that discussion, could be a motion coming out of it. I'm just suggesting, let's get a report, public can read it in advance, we can read it in advance and we can sort of vet it all together, which is probably a good way to go. So I would just say, if you modify the motion to say, can we get a report from staff on the membership in ICLI and what those, you know, pros and cons are from staff's point of view and have a council discussion. If action comes out of the discussion, then action comes out of the discussion.
I have a question for the city attorney and if we did it that way, could we actually have action that, at that meeting on the item?
I think what's being proposed is that the discussion occur and then direction be given, if I'm, if I'm understanding it correctly from Councilmember Lewis, that at that, at the, at a future meeting, you'd have the membership discussion if it was the council's decision to move forward.
Would a report and discussion preclude us from making a motion? Would it be a direction to staff to take us out of the membership?
You know, it's, it's all in how we would agendize the item for that meeting, if it was agendized as a report, it would typically, it's not an action item, the way our agendas are structured, if we put it as a new business item or under a different category, we could take action, we could have a report and an action.
So I would leave it to council discussion to figure that out, what's council's pleasure on that, but I would also encourage, if staff can answer any of the questions tonight, they're good questions, why not start the process?
Okay, so, Mr. Grocott made a motion to discuss membership, whether we should be members or not, correct?
I, yes, I made a motion that we-
Could you second that, Mr. Lewis?
I think it should come out of a filed report and discussion.
Okay, so you're not seconding it, okay. So, Mr. Griselli, do you have a discussion?
Well, I just, I just want to understand the concept, I agree with the fact that we agendize it and we talk about it and we decide, not a future meeting, so is that what you're asking, is that what your motion is?
Yeah, that's his motion.
Is that what your motion is, Mr. Grocott?
My motion is that we receive a report from staff-
Right.
-but that it be set up on the agenda, I don't want to burden the public with having to come back.
That, I don't know, that's my point, I think it should be one, one time.
That's right, one time.
That's my motion. That's the motion, so we understand that, so it'll be acted on, I second that.
Okay, Mr. Royce, do you have any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. Can we get approval of the rest of item 8A, by the way?
Oh, through the chair, yeah, I was gonna, that's what I was gonna ask, because there's another addendum I want to make, so. So I would move approval of the report and the addendum otherwise noted here.
I second that. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, okay, thank you all for coming. We're moving on to item 9A, consideration of grant funding request from Healthy Cities Tutoring, Inc. in the amount of $20,000 and provide direction to staff for the development of a council policy for community-based nonprofit organizations requesting grants and donations from the city.
Good evening, I'm Julia Roslow, Senior Management Analyst, Administrative Services Department. For your consideration tonight is a grant funding proposal from Healthy Cities Tutoring, Inc. in the amount of $20,000. Staff has no formal recommendation associated with this report, however, should council choose to avoid grant funding tonight, it is staff's recommendation that a new objective be added to the city's strategic plan, to develop a grant funding policy. This new policy would identify eligibility, terms and conditions of grant funding for nonprofit community-based organizations. Donna Becht from Healthy Cities is here tonight to answer any questions about the program and she has prepared a brief presentation for council's consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Julia? No, we're gonna have Donna come up and do her presentation. Thank you, Julia. Donna?
Good evening, Mayor Klein and members of the council, my name is Donna Becht, I'm the executive director of the newly formed 501(c)(3) Healthy Cities Tutoring, Inc. First and foremost, I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to seek your support for Healthy Cities Tutoring and to appear before you this evening. I hope in presenting to all of you, I may be preaching to the choir, four out of five of you are either current or former tutors for the program or your wife or partner is a tutor and the fifth one of you has always stated publicly or privately about your support of the program. In preparing my notes for this evening and looking through past files and folders, what emerges is a very rich history. In 1994, a group of city leaders got together to brainstorm how to best help San Carlos. There's a small startup grant available through the California Healthy Cities Project. A number of ideas were discussed and in the end, the decision was made that the best way to help San Carlos was to help children and families by creating a tutor mentor program. In December 1996, the Healthy Cities Tutoring Program was born and a pilot program was started at White Oak School. It was designed to serve kindergarten through third grade students and I was hired by the city of San Carlos to make, help make that happen. The city stepped up and so did the community in ways that exceeded our expectations. Now, almost 15 years later, we are all still here. In that time period, the program expanded to all seven schools in San Carlos, serving kindergarten through eighth grade students. We average approximately 200 children per year. Our volunteers range in age from 14 to over 80 and come from six high schools, all of our service clubs, PTAs, local business people, retirees, people representing all walks of life and they bring the community into our schools. And I think probably you've heard me say before, what they often tell me is, I think I'm learning more than my student. For volunteering, as many of you know, improves the quality of life for everyone involved. Along the way, we received a number of awards and accolades for our work. One of those was the Cities Counties and Schools Partnership or the CCS Partnership Award. We were honored with other organizations in California that were successful in delivering programs and services for the communities through collaborations of local city governments, counties and school districts. We were also selected by the San Mateo County School Board Association for the J. Russell Kent Award, given to programs that inspire vision and creativity as they help students achieve success. We nominated a man near and dear to all of our hearts for the Volunteer of the Year Award with the San Mateo County Family Service Agency for a service as a longtime tutor in our program. Forbes King, of course, deservedly won this award for his dedication to volunteer service. San Carlos mayors throughout the years have endorsed the program. One former mayor urged citizens to enroll as volunteers for the program in his State of the City speech. Former Mayor Sally Mitchell wrote in a letter, in a letter of support some years ago, "The San Carlos Healthy Cities Tutor Mentor Program is a remarkable community effort that brings together people of all ages to give support and guidance to youngsters in need." Most of you have participated in our annual recognition event and have seen firsthand the impact the program has had on people's lives in our town. Let me update you on where we are today. Our request for incorporation was approved in May and our 501(c)(3) application to the IRS was approved in September. We have an outstanding board of directors working on behalf of the goals of the program. Some of them are here today, Lauren Patchkowski is our president, our vice president is Roger Bodamer, secretary is Joyce Strauss, treasurer is Annie Mayo's and two other directors are Betty Casey and Cheryl Palmerink. This year, we are providing services at four elementary schools and two middle schools. Tutoring is done at the school sites, at the San Carlos Public Library, the youth center and other venues. We are in process now of placing all the students that had tutors last year, getting them relaunched again this year. Many tutors and students stay together for a number of years, that's the goal of the program because studies show that the longer a child has a caring adult in their lives over a period of time, the more impact that can have on absenteeism, no drug use and that sort of thing. We're also doing marketing efforts to recruit volunteers to attend our upcoming training on November 2nd, you should see a banner about the program on Laurel Street tomorrow. We're also, we have a long waiting list already developing for students in need at every school. Why Fund Healthy Cities? I already gave you a lot of data in the report that was furnished through Jeff Malpey, but let me reiterate that the program is a cost-effective way to support children in our community. The help provided by our volunteers increased academic scores by 25% and self-esteem scores by 18% on our assessment tool, but that's just one measure, it's really pretty simple. Children benefit from additional adult support and guidance in their lives. The Healthy Cities program originated with the city of San Carlos and, as I mentioned, has been in existence for close to 15 years. By remaining a partner in this community endeavor, the city of San Carlos helps encourage funding for the San Carlos-based program to outside organizations, as funders are much more likely to embrace programs with established partnerships. As a partner with Healthy Cities Tutoring, the city of San Carlos shares with other partners and the broader community a program that fosters citizen, community involvement and a stronger sense of community, two core values of the city of San Carlos. I would like to further address our partnerships, not all partnerships are equal, yet all of our supporters are trying to help our program address our need for resources to the best of their ability. The Friends of the San Carlos Library contributed $10,000. The San Carlos Development Group contributed $5,000. Two private citizens have given $4,000 and we expect other donors to come forward. The San Carlos Colson District gave $10,500 in direct support and $2,500 in in-kind support as far as facility to work in, desk, computer space, printing, that sort of thing. This reflects $3,000 more than the original budget you received showed as this money was allocated after the school year started. The San Carlos Youth Advisory Council just recently gave $250, so even the youth recognize the value to their peers of the program. I have assurances from the Rotary Club that they will make a donation within their means and I believe this will be true for the other service clubs as they have always been donors as well. Our current unmet need, if you were able to fund at the $20,000 level, and I really, really hope that you do, will be just under about $42,000, so I still have a ways to go. You've been there from the beginning and I ask for your continued support tonight. We have a little mini PowerPoint, just a few little pictures to warm your heart. We have a little mini PowerPoint, just a few little pictures to warm your heart. Okay. And just in closing, over 14 years ago, key members of this community had a vision to help children and families, and it became a reality. Thank you for your help and support in ensuring that those dreams could continue to thrive.
Thank you, Donna. We're going to have some questions, I imagine. Mr. Lewis, do you have anything?
I'm sorry, I just missed what the total operating budget was.
It's --
On a yearly basis.
It's $90,000.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Mr. Griselli?
I think I heard you say that if we do end up giving $20,000, you'll still have to go out and raise another 22.
Yeah, we'll have to raise about 43.
Oh, I'm sorry, 43. I apologize, I missed that. When you spoke to the school district, did you ask for more than they gave you?
I am still kind of in conversation with them, hoping that down the road, we might be able to get more, but I'm aware of their financial difficulties. So it may be that if more money can be raised, they may be able to fund more money to us, so we're hoping that more money will come, but that's the amount that we could get right now. Is the 13. Did I --
I understand. I asked --
Did I ask for more?
And I apologize, putting you on the spot, but quite honestly, you're asking us for more than they're giving.
Right.
And so I'm asking, did you ask for more? And the reason for -- I understand the reason for maybe not doing it.
Right.
I'm just -- and I'm not trying to
Right.
Be argumentative. I'm just asking if you asked for more money from them.
Uh-huh.
Do you remember? If not, that's fine.
I was a -- I did not.
Okay, that's fine.
I did not.
No problem. I'm not trying to put you on the spot here.
I'm kind of a little bit, always kind of in the middle of, I'm hoping people can give what they can.
Mm-hmm.
And I felt at the time that I was approaching the school district, I was aware of the situation and felt like I was going to take a chance on this program, even if the school district couldn't give any.
Mm-hmm.
Because I was aware of the situation they were in. I mean, I'd been laid off because there wasn't the money for it.
I understand.
And I know they value the program. So I was jumping in and going to do it even without them giving any.
I understand. And again, I'm not trying to cause any trouble.
Yeah, no, 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 you're not.
I just have to ask the question.
So I didn't ask for more.
It's a school -- I mean, it's an educational program.
Right.
And I'm just asking, you know --
No, I understand.
Okay.
So I didn't ask for more.
Okay, thank you.
And then that was --
I got it, Donna, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Don't mean to put you on the spot. I apologize if I did.
Right. And then, can I comment further on that, though?
Sure.
My hope is that you'll recognize that I'm just in the middle, or now I'm independent, and I'm needing to raise money in order for this program to exist in our community. And I'm not representing really the school district or the city or --
You're representing the program.
Right.
I get it.
Yeah. And so, you know, I'm hoping that this will, the value of this program and the meaning of this program to this community, regardless of, that there's an unmet need, and regardless of what the school district does, the city will see its value and stand up for that.
I don't think there's any question that the city and all of us
Right.
Agree on the value, Donna.
Right.
That's not the point.
Regardless of what a dollar amount the school district can come up with.
I understand, but I have to ask the question
Right, you did, yeah.
Because we're a public entity.
Right.
And it's public money.
Right.
As theirs is public money.
Right.
So that's why I have to ask the question, I'm sorry.
No, I know.
But I give, I work on a foundation that gives out grants.
Absolutely, I know.
And sometimes you have to ask some harder questions, and I apologize, but
No.
You have to do it.
For sure.
Okay.
I'll be coming to Gellert in August.
I know. And we'd be happy to see you.
Yeah.
Okay?
On my list.
Good. I don't think I have anything more.
Okay, Mr. Royce?
Well, Mr. Griselli, I apologize. I'm going to ask a similar question.
Okay.
Might be a little tougher to answer. My history goes back, I may be off on a year, but this started in the City of San Carlos back
Right.
At the beginning, and we were the ones that funded it. In '08, '09, the school district and the City of San Carlos each put $40,000 in. In the following year, I think it was still a team, I don't know what the dollar amounts were, and they may have been different, but it was still San Carlos and the district. I remember the meeting very closely in looking at the budget for '10, '11. That is the time when, right here in city council, we decided to transfer, to release the sister cities to the school district, and they agreed to manage it.
Healthy Cities.
Healthy Cities. Healthy Cities, I'm sorry. And again, I don't know what the financing was, but of course, the financing has always been school, city, and a huge group of volunteers, Rotary Club, private
Right.
contributors and so forth. But that was a real changing year where we released it to the district.
Right.
And then, over that next year, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they took, with good intentions, a shot at it to make it occur, and at the end of that fiscal year, they kind of, I don't understand, they kind of closed the doors. I know they let you go, and so it was in limbo, although I think that the organization and the process still somewhat occurs with all these volunteers. I'm not sure how all that occurs. And so here we are now, looking at, I guess, this, the '11, '12 year
Correct.
For, which we're part of the way in, for us to go back and contribute, you know, $20,000, and the district at $7,500 or a little bit more with overhead. But now I get to my question, which is similar to what Mr. Griselli asked. So the school, I kind of look at them and the superintendent being a little bit more adept or skilled at tutoring and the value of tutoring. I know myself, I think the value of tutoring the kids is incredible for what it does for the children and what it does for the volunteers. But in a business environment now, the district had their year, and I use the word "close the door" or whatever it is. Do you have any insight on why they changed, why they gave up after a year? What is their board, not board, their school board and Craig, what is their feeling on this program looking forward? Because what I've seen, what I see here is they dropped out. So tell me more.
Well, I think --
And I kind of rely on their expertise.
Right.
What did they say? What were the reasons?
Well, I mean, I think it really boiled down to financial reasons that they, in terms of had to fund only things that were happening in the classroom, you know, just bare bones teachers, I mean, we had to raise class size, there was a lot of things cut, and this was one of the things that was cut. Just kind of similar to when we, you know, the city had to cut things that we didn't want to cut either, and that happened, and so, you know, as much as, I mean, I do think they respect the program and are happy that it's going to continue, and that the teachers, as I've gone to all the staff meetings and so forth, people see it as a support to their students. But for the school district, when they had to decide between books and teachers, you know, the essentials, they had to make hard decisions. So.
Okay. So again, so I'd just like to share my feeling is here, it's nice to work as a team.
Right.
And 50/50 is usually the best team.
Right.
But yet, we have to be sensitive to people's financial situation. And of course, we could talk about that quite a bit here, but the $20,000 versus less is a little bit of a, I feel a little bit uncomfortable based on the history and base that they took it over. So that's my only concern.
Yeah. I mean, it just, it was out of financial constraints, and I fully, I mean, I'm hoping that that amount will go up to $20,000 next year.
It'll go up for the school?
Right.
You've been told that, or?
No, but I'm planning.
You think?
He's going to ask for it.
Yeah. He's going to ask for it.
Okay, Mr. Growcott?
The, just to make sure, I wanted to get this answered or clarified. If we authorize the $20,000, then you're still in need of 43 to meet your $90,000 operating budget. Do, I'm trying to remember when I did tutoring, if it, if, I know my student was in middle school when I started. When he got into high school, still tutoring? Are we tutoring high school students?
We do not. The program doesn't continue into high school.
Okay. I wasn't sure about that. Do we have students from, we have a Catholic school in town, do we have students in the program from Catholic?
We don't, and that's something that I would consider adding St. Charles with looking into the resources of doing that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, you know, I'm trying to maintain a budget that I don't have right now, but St. Charles might be interested in partnering with us, and I see that as an opportunity to look into.
Okay. Well, and it might be an opportunity for additional funding as well.
Exactly. It could be a win-win.
Win-win, okay. And I'm almost reluctant, given what you've told me about what your need will still be and so forth, but when I attended the forum on, for school board, you know, the election coming up and so forth, one of the things that was discussed is that we've got students that you're dealing with that are in need of help because they're struggling with school, certain subjects or whatever. They talked about the need at the other end, where you have students who are excelling, and they need tutors to do projects to challenge them, to keep them interested in school.
Mm-hmm.
And so I just, you know, I thought this was an opportunity to mention that, but as you say, you've got limited funds right now, and your bandwidth is within that limited funds. And I, just one more comment in that regard. Years ago, I used to volunteer for a program up in San Francisco that worked with kids, and it was, I don't know if it was a Healthy Cities program or something similar organization behind it, but our tutoring had to do with preparing kids to go do job interviews and other life skills that they're meeting up to, you know, as they mature. So those are just some other things I would mention to you.
Right.
My last question is this, and this gets more into what we're looking at right now, and that is, would it be a help if we took this request and said, "Okay, we'll do 15, and we'll do five, but it's predicated upon a program where you go get donors, and you tell donors, 'We have an opportunity to get $5,000 from the City of San Carlos'
Match.
For match.
Sure.
And if that would help, I think that's a way we could slice it, and then you get an additional, instead of getting 20 from us, you get essentially 25.
I could, I could get behind that.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Thank you, Donna.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Pretty kind.
Excuse me, through the chair, I want to quick, did Ed Foundation, have you approached the San Carlos Education Foundation?
I met with the President of the Ed Foundation, and their charter can't give to outside organizations the way it's structured, but we're going to work together on some grants, where we're going to partner on writing some grants together, and that's a way to, that they can help us. So we are going to work together.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move us for discussions. Does anyone want to jump in? Thank you very much, Donna.
Well, I mean, I will jump in. I remember way back when I was part of the Park and Rec Commission, back in the mid 2000s, I guess you refer to it now, Berrywise, they teamed up with the, you know, 40 assets for youth in the community, and I think one of the 40 assets that we were weakest in is in adult and child interaction, adult and youth interaction in town. And I would say, other than the teachers in the schools, probably sports groups that are one of our primary adult and youth interactions. So I know, I was also part of the council when we reduced the funding and ultimately had to eliminate the funding, which I don't think I voted for at the time, but I just want to encourage the council that to continue to look at this for more than just the one prism, the academic prism of, you know, if the school board supports it or they don't support it. The prism that I look at it from is that it's a dramatically important community asset. And it's a way that we actually can, you know, it's a well-run program that's, you see some of the volunteers over the years, and some of the kids that have benefited from it. I just think it's really important. And I would just point out to you, you all, you've done some very hard budget work over the last couple of years. And I'd like to think that the difficult decisions that you've had to make up here also allow for a certain, you know, give back. There's a corresponding, maybe there's a couple of things that we can do now. You know, I remember the Cut Board program for the seniors, that just broke my heart when we had to eliminate that. So to me, this is one of those programs that, you know, if we could support it, I think it'd be great and really important. I love Councilmember Growcott's idea about a match for incentive, especially if the director feels like that might be a positive thing. It's a good way to go as well, but that's my two cents.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Griselli?
Well, I echo what Mr. Lewis says about, it's not just about education, it's about the community. As all of us up here have had some experience in having to cut programs over the years from our budget, and some were much harder than others, we are in a position today, not exactly being rich, but at least we have a balanced budget and a bit of a surplus, that we can start to look back at how we can affect the community with how we spend the public's dollars. And there's, and as the slides pointed out, there's an awful lot of intangible positives about this program. So not to belabor it, because all of us want to speak, but I do think that Mr. Growcott's idea is a good idea, as long as it works with Donna's approval, to go out and show that we're participating and that we would like the community to participate with us. And I think that might be the way that we can do this.
Mr. Royce?
So I'm an expert at home, my wife, that works with kids. She's an expert in working with kids. And if I could summarize, her thought would be, you know, kids need attention, and they need it year after year after year, and it does work. Or the other way to put it, if you don't give them attention, it doesn't work, which is ugly. So I'm, you know, all these years, I've been a strong supporter of our Healthy Cities. And the only issue, I kind of relate to other council here, and this isn't the weakness I have, being a financial guy, I want to dive into, well, $43,000 short, well, how much does it cost to run? Well, can we run it with a director at halftime and use two volunteers? Can we cut costs with this? Can we go get more money from, you know? We'll be, we could talk another two hours about how to manage it. I think Donna has done it long enough to know what's best, and I think she's flexible to make some changes, because I think there are some changes that need to occur. But as it reflects my statement here, truly a supporter of the program, the amount, to me, is a little bit unknown. Let's do what we think is a right amount, but it's not going to be a part of a balancing their, well, their fund. It's just, there's a lot of items that still need to be worked out. In fact, we're two or three months into the year already with the program, and are you, you're not hired back yet, you don't, you're not paid for any of this, right?
No, I'm not.
But you will be with the 501(c)(3), you will become a director.
Donna, excuse me, if you're going to speak, you have to speak at the microphone, I'm sorry. If you're going to ask questions
I'm sorry.
She needs to speak at the microphone.
Yeah, just to answer that one. So when will you kick in as the director for the 501(c)(3)?
When we raise enough money.
All right, okay. Great, thank you. So anyway, that's where I am. So anyway, that's where I am.
Okay, Mr. Grocott?
Well, I was just gonna say to Mr. Royce's comment about kids need attention, I've been married three years now with some children, I hadn't noticed that they need attention. Just kidding, they need a lot of attention, you're right. Regarding the, the matching, I think, in speaking to the topic here, I think that's what I would like to do as a motion, and I'll give my reasons why. One is, it's, it is a little touchy to do a grant program from the city, because you're dealing with the public's money, it's nice to be generous, but it's not really our money. And so I think the, the grant program does two things. One, as Mr. Griselli said, it does say to the community, this is an important program, it's not just about education, it's about community and community involvement. So it says to the city, this is important to your elected officials, we wanna take the lead on this, but we don't wanna, we don't wanna do the whole thing, we wanna see if you're, you know, if you vote with your dollars essentially and show us that you're interested in this program, then it shows us that we did the right thing. And then I think we can adjust that as the years go by, if we continue to do this, maybe we do it, you know, if you come back for 10, or excuse me, for 20, then we do a 10-10 program and see if that works. The second reason I bring it up is because I think it gives some direction to staff. One of the other items on this agenda item is that we develop a policy for grant funding, and perhaps that's something that we look at, we do this as an experiment, see how it works, and say, this is gonna be part of our policies, that whenever we do grant funding, we're always gonna have as part of it, or at least offer it to the council as, you know, something on their decision process here as an alternative, to do a matching program, not just direct, here's the money and, and that's it. So with that, I would make the motion that we authorize staff to make a straightforward $15,000 grant with 5,000 available for matching grant, and then as part of the motion, also that staff add to our strategic plan an item for, future item, I don't, so just so that we don't lose it at our next strategic plan. I'm not asking that we do this between now and the next six months, but that we earmark it on our strategic plan for the next time we meet, so we don't lose the topic.
Okay, is there a second? A second to motion.
Okay, so now we'll discuss, well, I haven't spoken yet, Mr. Lewis, you can wait one second. I'm just gonna echo everyone's thoughts, there's no reason for me to pile on. I've enjoyed being a tutor in the Healthy Cities tutoring program. Last year, I thought I was too busy, didn't wanna be a tutor, but the tutor, the teacher I tutor for is my fourth grade teacher, so there's no saying no to that, so I'm stuck.
Mrs. Vandor?
Mrs. Vandor is my second and fourth grade teacher.
My kid's teacher.
Yeah, and she's still there.
Small world.
So I'm in the program for as long as Ms. Vandor is, is around, so that might keep her from retiring. But yeah, no, I think, my only question is with, with what was proposed, and maybe I'll ask you, Mr. Grocott, what does it mean when you, when you say a $5,000 grant? Does that mean if, if Donna raises another $5,000, we give her that? What's the match?
I guess for, it would be that, that's a good question, I would think for every dollar they raise, up to 5,000, we'll match it.
Okay.
I think that's the way that works.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, did you have some discussion?
Well, I did, I just wanted to, because we, I didn't talk about the general policy thing, and number one, I don't, I mean, we could talk about the strategic, I don't know whether or not we need a policy about these things necessarily, sometimes we can overpolize. I would say, though, that we could maybe, and maybe this is essentially that, but some core criteria for discussion, if council felt like we did, would be, I may think it would be important to see what the operating expenses are and understand, you know, how the money's being spent, you know, which, and then the other thing would be a list of current donors, so we know who else is supporting the organization, so we just, so those kinds of things, I'm sure there are others, you know, leave it to council and staff to also add to that.
And Mr. Lewis, just to push back a little bit, on the policy thing, I think that would be a great thing for us to have for staff, because if staff gets grant requests, they need to have a broma and say, what comes to the council, what doesn't? And I also think they need a timeline of when we will accept grant requests. I mean, this one's just, it's one of those things that triggers something else, but I think it'd be preferable for staff for us, if we're gonna do grants, they come before our budget season. Or we budget an amount that we're going to grant out, and that's what we play with.
Maybe that's another way to approach it. You know, one thing is, we're all familiar with this program, it's a program we used to fund, it's sort of coming back to us, an opportunity to fund, thanks to the efforts of the board and so forth. I guess I also think that we need to be careful as a city, as soon as we have a policy for that, we could do a lot of, Bob maybe can speak to the specimen on the board that he's on, is that we may get tons and tons of requests, it could take a lot of staff time, so by establishing the policy, we're also establishing that.
Invitation.
We're open for, stores open for applications, and I just don't know whether or not we're capable of, of responding to that, it's not for lack of need of kind of core criteria by which we, we need to sort of analyze.
So, if I may.
Mr. Grocott?
Yeah.
Perhaps to address that, we rather, I'm agreeing with Mr. Lewis, maybe we don't have a policy, but we at least come up with guidelines, and then that looks a little less like an invitation.
Yeah. Yeah, I know what policy, it's pretty much the same.
Slicing and dicing terminology.
But I wanna make sure everybody understands, and Mr. Malpe, if you know this answer, right now, out of the general fund, we do not give any money away, or do we? To nonprofits, out of the general fund?
Out of the general fund, I believe we do, there, and they're smaller dollar amounts in the neighborhood of 2,000 to 3,000 dollars. One is to the county youth jobs program that comes out of the council's budget, I believe we've kept that in the budget the last couple of years, it's, and I think you cut it in half, I think originally it was 2,000 a year, I think it's down to 1,000 a year, and then I think there's another grant to one of the housing endowments.
That comes out of redevelopment.
Out of redevelopment, okay, so just the youth jobs out of the.
Right, so really, in effect, at this point in time, there's two.
That's correct, and my concern with wanting to develop either a policy or guidelines, I, I use the term policy, but I thought of it very much as Councilmember Lewis and Vice Mayor Grocott described it, in terms of those types of criteria and the guidelines, but just wanna make sure, there are a number of San Carlos-based community organizations that have very worthy causes and programs in town, and I know they would like to be on even footing in terms of having the opportunity to apply for and show the council what they could do with those kinds of resources as well.
The difficulty that I have is, through the chair?
Yep.
Is that I know of another city in the peninsula that has actually a meeting to discuss, and they have, I think, 10 or 12 amounts, and I only know of one, and maybe there are other cities that do it, and it is, you know, sort of a come-one, come-all type situation, and all within that city. And once you set up, again, I'm not trying to denigrate it, setting up rules and regulations, but once you do that, we, in our, the foundation that I sit on, when I joined the foundation, we didn't have a really good set of policies, we used to get applications from around the world for money. We finally set it up, a couple of years after I got on, that it's basically the nine Bay area counties. As it is, we get 321 applications for the money.
So you're saying you want a policy?
I'm saying I don't want a policy for the city. I want a policy for where I sit on, but not, not for the city, because what's gonna, in my opinion, what's gonna, as you mentioned, Mr. Lewis, it's gonna be, the other organizations that Mr. Malpe mentioned are gonna go, well, we have a possibility of getting, we're gonna have a special meeting, and we're gonna have to say, do we give any, do we, first of all, can we give any money away? And then, do we give it to Healthy Cities, do we give it to ABC company or foundation, or do we give it to this, give it to the youth? It's a very, it's a, it can be a slippery slope, if we were, you know, possibly as rich as Midas, we could do this, but this, it's a little, we don't have a policy now, things seem to be working pretty well. If people wanna come up and ask us for money.
But who decides that and what?
We decide it.
Well, no, because no, I don't remember discussing that we were gonna put Healthy Cities on the agenda, Mr. Griselli, I think that was a discussion between me and the city manager.
I'm sorry, I'm confused, we're talking about it now.
Yeah, we're talking about it now, this wasn't brought up in the six-month retreat, this was triggered because of grant requests.
I'm sorry, I didn't have any, I wasn't speaking to the six-month retreat.
No, exactly, but me as a council never had a discussion that Healthy Cities was going to come onto this agenda, or come onto any agenda, or that we were going to have a discussion about grant funding.
All right.
And the reason I'm gonna push very heavily that we have a policy is because I believe it keeps the city manager from playing politics, because what happens if Tom Davids in San Carlos Together comes? Or San Carlos Green comes to Mr. Malpe and goes, we want a grant for $10,000, we got this great program, and he says no? What right does he have to say no, or what right does he have to say yes? Where is the trigger? And I think you're putting our city manager in a really awkward place by not having a policy, maybe the policy just says, they have to be from San Carlos and we'll only accept them going into the budget season? Something like that, but we have to give him the ability to say yes or no.
Well, he hasn't had, if, to the city manager. He hasn't had this problem before.
No, he hasn't.
I don't think any of the city managers have come to us at any time going, oh my God, I'm getting asked for a million dollars.
Well, because for the past 10 years, we've been cutting.
Well.
That's the, no one was coming to us going, hey, give us money to.
Well, maybe, I don't know, maybe we can call Mr. Garvey and ask him if he has.
Through the chair, is the city manager asking for a policy or not? I mean.
Yeah, I think he is.
Yes, I am. This is my recommendation, that we put together some guidelines about how we would address requests from nonprofit organizations, be they from San Carlos or elsewhere in the future. If we would have, as Councilmember Griselli points out, one meeting a year, or one item on one meeting a year, where these applications would be presented to council presumably around budget time, or if there would be, you know, the council could identify a certain number of groups that they would like to have, to provide funding on an annual basis as part of the budget. There's a lot of different ways we could slice and dice this, to use Vice Mayor Grocott's term, but just to give us a little bit of guidance on what we do when these requests come forward, because certainly, I can, I can tell you from conversations I have, that this request isn't flying under the radar with some of the other groups in town, that they're aware that you're about to potentially grant, a fairly sizable grant, to a nonprofit in this community, and, and I think that there are other groups in town that would like the opportunity to compete for that kind of funding as well. And so the question becomes, are we doing this in a vacuum or in the future? Because I presume Healthy Cities will likely be back next year for a grant, this is an annual program, how will we, how will we look at these types of grants within a broader spectrum of requests that I anticipate we're likely to see?
And just to add something through the chair, because there was a comment about, you know, when have we last seen these requests, and I think the council is right, we used to get these requests annually before we started cutting the budget 10 years ago, and back in the day, we did have a policy, and the policy, and I'm not suggesting this should be the policy, the policy was that the various nonprofits went to the various city departments and asked to have their proposal put in the city budget, and the theory at the time was that if nonprofit could get past that bar, in other words, a program like, one of the examples used to be suicide prevention, which was in the police budget, and the thought was that if a specific department thought the program was worthy enough, then obviously it was worth bringing to the city manager and ultimately bringing to the city council. But there, there was in fact a policy, so I would concur with the city manager's recommendation that now that you're potentially on the verge of granting the first request in a long time, I'm sure there will be more, and it would probably serve you well to have a policy, whatever that might be.
I have a question.
Mr. Grocott?
This is for the city attorney, I suppose, to wordsmith this, we gested up here the difference between policy and guidelines, but legally, is there any difference between having guidelines versus a policy?
I, well, my impression is that there is probably not much of a difference between the two, because you're using both to measure the application against. And I think it occurred to me in your discussion, just if I may add something, that there's two different elements of what you're talking about. First of all, the legal threshold question is when you donate to a, to a nonprofit or you give a grant, is you have to identify a public purpose for that, so that would be the basis for your policy on how, how you're gonna evaluate, that'd be your start point. And then you've got two elements to that, one is the guidelines or policy with regard to how you're gonna evaluate an application and under that legal standard, and the other is process. How do we wanna process an application? Is it, as the mayor suggests, we wanna see them all at, at budget season and make sure we, we can make a decision on the amount that we're willing to provide globally to nonprofits and consider them all at the same time, and then use the criteria, how you're gonna evaluate them then, or, those are all things that you could discuss as suggested by the motion at your future strategic plan. Tonight, we really don't have that aspect of it on the agenda, but really what you, that seems to be where you're kinda headed, is do you want a process discussion and/or guidelines, because you could have one without the other, it seems to me.
So, Mr. Mayor, my, my motion's still.
Okay, and your motion, sorry, it's been a while. It's not changing. 15,000 with a 5,000 matching grants, and then for us to propose, to discuss that the city's strategic plan, some sort of policy slash guidelines, right?
Yeah, for a future council meeting, exactly.
And then, just because I won't be a part of that strategic plan, I would just say the sponsoring department's, I think, a nice core criteria, having it, not necessarily absolutely needing one, but certainly as a criteria for evaluation, if, if a department says, comes forward, and they have a sponsoring department, that would speak to it.
Okay, Madam Kirk, was there a second?
Yes, there was.
Okay, so is there any other discussion? All right, let's take the vote.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 9b, consideration of adopting an urgency ordinance authorizing amendment to contract between the Board of Administration, California Public Employees' Retirement System, and the City of San Carlos. Ms. Mendenhall, welcome back.
Good evening again. So before you tonight is an urgency ordinance authorizing amendment to our contract with CalPERS. At the last council meeting, council adopted a resolution of intention and introduced an ordinance to adopt a contract with PERS for our fire employees, establishing a 2% at 50 pension formula. The regular ordinance approved on September 26th requires a 30-day wait period before it can be implemented. Under CalPERS rules, after 20 days, council can approve an urgency ordinance establishing that the pension contract be effective immediately. Since our contract provides for 100% prior service, our employees will have pension service credit retroactive to their hire date or no loss in pension coverage. Also, on September 26th, council approved a resolution electing to be subject to Pemca, which added the fire-sworn employees to the city's CalPERS health plan. Although the Pemca resolution has an effective date of November 1st, the Pemca resolution cannot be effective until the first day of the following month after the CalPERS ordinance is in place. Adoption of the urgency ordinance tonight will ensure that our employees have health coverage effective November 1st. The urgency ordinance requires a four-fifth vote for adoption. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
The only thing I'm confused about is how do these employees have health coverage in between time?
Under the JPA, they had coverage through the end of October. The existing, or the transitioning JPA employees.
Very good, thank you.
Is that the only question?
No, just a, a comment, just to the public, the reason we're having our meeting tonight, Mr. Mayor, is, is because of this issue, just so folks know, because normally we would be.
We'd be on the 10th, yeah. Okay, with that being made, can we have a motion?
I'm sorry, are we not? I'll make a motion that we adopt the urgency ordinance, is there one to read here? Ordinance number?
1437.
And urgency ordinance of the city council, the city of San Carlos authorizing amendment to the contract between the city of San Carlos and the Board of Administration and the California Public Employees Retirement System.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Kirk?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 9c, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the payoff of the loan assumed by San Carlos for engine 16 as a result of the dissolution from the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. Welcome back again.
Yes, actually, I have nothing further to add, other than what's in the staff report. The amount of the payoff is a little over $200,000, and as we did discuss in the budget study session, all one-time costs associated with the dissolution will come from the prior year's fund balance.
Okay, are there any questions? Seeing none, is there any discussion? Seeing none, can we entertain a motion?
I'll make a resolution number 2011.
96.
Authorization of the city council, the city of San Carlos to pay off loan for engine 16, assumed as part of the dissolution of the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department.
Is there a second? Second. Madam Kirk?
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, okay. And with that, that ends the 5-o portion of our night, we will start at 9d, consideration of setting a public hearing on December 12, 2011, to consider increased 2012 rates for residential and commercial solid waste collection services pursuant to Prop. 218.
Ever now? Gotta have a little fun up here, Brad. Oh, yeah. I love it. Okay.
Got to have a little fun up here, Brian. Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of council, and on to the solid waste rates. First, I wanted to give you an overview of the solid waste process and the rates. Each year, we come to the council to talk about the solid waste rates. They're designed to cover the annual cost of providing garbage and recycling service to all the residents and commercial businesses in San Carlos. The role of the South Bay Waste Management Authority, SBWMA, is to review the requests by the companies for compensation, and then develop recommendations for the SBWMA to approve and then recommend to the member agencies. This year is a little different for a couple of reasons. Number one, as we told you earlier this year on the 2011 rates, we're changing providers. We used to have Allied Waste and Republic that provided all of the services. They both did the collection of garbage and recycling, and they also ran the transfer station and the recycling recovery facility. Now, we have two vendors. Recology does the collection, and South Bay Recycling does the MRF and the transfer station. In terms of compensation, we also have a change. Allied, and before them, BFI, had a so-called cost-plus contract, where they received all of their costs plus a guaranteed profit margin. There was an annual rate-setting process, and they had what was called a balance account, where any amount that was not covered by the rates in one year could be transferred to a following year with interest, and that account could be rolled for as many years as one might like. And as you'll see in an upcoming slide, that's created some difficulties, particularly for some of our neighboring cities. In Recology, the format's a little different. There is a fixed-price contract based on an index. There's an annual rate-setting process, and there's also what we call a deferred true-up, which is the difference between the revenue collected and the costs rolled to the following year, and they can either be paid up in that year without interest, or rolled to a further year with interest. In terms of what we're looking at for 2012, and again, this is very similar to what you saw last year, as I mentioned, in 2011, for the next several years, as we transition from one provider to another, where in a bit of a transition period, where we're going to be paying costs for both the former provider and the current one. And as you'll see in this chart, I've divided this up into two categories, what's called the so-called rate requirement, and what we're calling the total impact. And you can see here the range of potential rates for 2012. It's obviously up to each governing body to decide how much of this rate to impose in 2012, and how much to roll over with interest. As you can see, the total impact ranges from minus 15.6% in the North Fair Oaks portion of the unincorporated county, all the way up to 52.4% in Hillsborough. In terms of the required rate, there are basically two components. One are the changes in the year-to-year Recology costs. In San Carlos's case, that's gone up by 5.3%. The second column is the so-called Allied wrap-up cost. This is to pay off the balance account. And the council will probably recall that in setting this year's rates, you were given the choice of paying off those costs in 2011, or paying part of them in 2011 and part of them in 2012. And the council decided to front the money to keep rates a little lower in 2012. And as you can see by the numbers, that's exactly how it's worked out. In other cities that, and it's roughly 50/50, as you'll notice, roughly half the cities fronted the number, the other half did not. And you can see the cities with the largest rate increase, people like Belmont, Atherton, Hillsborough, Mamlo Park, East Palo Alto were the ones that did not front the money. And then we have the true-up percentage, which in our case is 3.6%. That's the portion that you have the option of paying in 2012 without interest, or rolling for a year with interest, which is roughly 4%. And so, this is an overview of the rates for 2012, and the various factors which were detailed in your staff report. Some of the factors, and we'll go into some of these in a bit more detail. We had a shortfall in revenue due to the so-called cart migration, which we'll talk about in a minute. There were the increases in Recology's collection costs. There were increases in disposal fees and costs, which are basically the South Bay recycling component of the rate. There was a slight reduction in franchise fees. I was able to reduce the city's portion of the fees. There are a couple of fees that were projected in the new franchise that we turned out not to charge, and so we've deducted those. That's why there's a slight drop. The city also received a slight credit for organics. As you probably recall, we started that program two years early, and so we purchased some of those materials in 2009, and that's the reason we have a savings there. And then the franchise fee on the adjustment. As I noted before, the 3.6% true-up is the difference between the amount billed this year and the actual costs. That's optional to the council, whether you want to impose that in 2012, or you want to roll it over to 2013. And again, what's significant in the San Carlos rates in 2012 is, because the council decided to front the money for Allied payoff, you do not have any component of that in your 2012 rates. Let's talk a little bit about the cart migration. San Carlos saw this factor a year early, in 2010, and the reason for that, as I've mentioned before, was the early start of the organics program. What has happened is, as we have offered people, or our customers, both the organics recycling, and more recently, the weekly recycling service, what we've seen is a dramatic increase in the amount of recycling, not only in San Carlos, but now, as of January 1st, all of the agencies. Because of January 1st, now all of them have organics, which they did not have up until this year. And so, we've seen quite a bit less garbage going to the landfill across the SBWMA. It's been almost a 20% drop, and recycling in residential accounts is over 30% to the positive. And that has a couple of effects. Obviously, good news to the residents, because as they lower their can sizes, they see, even with rate increases, they see an actual dollar reduction as they downsize their service. But it also means that we end up with less revenue each year than we initially projected. And as I note on the slide, the reasons that we see for cart migration include things such as the food scraps program, first in San Carlos, and then agency-wide, the weekly recycling. And also, another factor that we'll talk about in a minute, which is that in most of the cities, including San Carlos, the city's rate structure is so progressive that at 20 and 32 gallons, the rates that we charge do not cover the actual cost of those services. Here's a slide that I put together with the help of SBWMA staff the last couple of days, and this shows you the actual cart migration in the last 12 months in San Carlos. Believe it or not, ours is actually a bit more modest than the other cities. And again, that's because we've had two years of organics service, and the other cities have just started in January. And so, a lot of the organic, or the cart migration occurred actually last year. But as you can see, this year, we've seen 244 additional accounts at 20-gallon, 138 additional accounts at 32-gallon, and conversely, a loss of 43 accounts at 64-gallon, and a loss of accounts at the 96-gallon level. So clearly, there's a continual swing towards the two lower services, which again, tells you that there's less garbage being dumped in the community, and it also tells you recycling's up, which is a good thing. But again, from a revenue point of view, there's a challenge, as you'll see by the next slide. The next slide compares the rates that we charged this year compared to the cost this year. So for example, the cost for 20-gallon service each month is $43.59, but we only charge $18. The cost for 32-gallon service is $49.38. We charge $28. You can see, as you get to 64 and 96, at 64, it's about a wash. We're charging about what it actually costs. And at 96, we're actually charging more than it costs. So, that helps you explain why you have revenue shortfalls when the mix of accounts doesn't match, at the end of the year, doesn't match what the mix of accounts was at the beginning of the year. Attachment Q. We talked about this last year, and wanted to also highlight this again this year. These are the sort of optional or unscheduled services, as they're called in the franchise. These are outside of the rate process. These are things like backyard service rather than curbside service, additional recycling carts, et cetera. And residents can sign up for these in addition to the baseline rates. There's a table called Attachment Q in the franchise that set the first-year rates. Each year, Recology is allowed to increase these costs by an index. In 2012, the amount of their allowed increase is 1.67%, which is what they've requested. And staff believes, much as we did last year, that the Attachment Q services should be a straight pass-through. That is, we should charge the actual cost. And so, that's what we're recommending as part of the rates. So if a rate recommendation goes forward, part of that will be the Attachment Q section. Just as a reminder, to show you and compare what we did last year with what we're proposing for the coming year, in last year, you had four components to the rates. You had the base rate. You had the can migration, which was a bit higher than it is this year, and you had the balance account. And the choices last year was the council had the choice of raising the rates 11.9% and moving the Allied expense to this year, or including all the costs. And the council decided to include all of the costs, which explains why you don't have the Allied component this year. Now, moving on to options that we would suggest at the staff level for 2012, there are obviously others, but these are the three that we think are the most interesting. The first is for you to move forward with the hearing, but only for the required rates component, which would be 5.3%. It would fund the required component of the 2012 rate only, and it would roll the true-up into the fall, into 2013. However, when you roll it over, you do incur interest. This particular recommendation also assumes that you have one month of retroactivity, which again, another variation on the theme is you could do it without retroactivity, and we'll talk about that in a minute. The second option is to do what we call the total impact rate, but retroactive to January 1st, and that would be an 8.9% increase. That would fund all of the required 2012 costs and the true-up, so you would not incur the interest on the true-up, and you would not roll it forward. And it would also continue to set the rate retro. And let me explain at this point, the situation in San Carlos with retroactive rates. The reason that San Carlos's rates, at least in the past, have always been retroactive, is that when you take the 12 agencies, they're roughly split into three groups, and one group gets billed in January, and one gets billed in February, and one gets billed in March. We're in the second group. And so, when the rates are calculated by, in the past, it's been Hilton Fair and Coffin-Hobson, the consultant. This year, it's SBWMA staff. They're all set as if the billing occurs in January 1st, which of course, for San Carlos, it does not. So, you have a couple of choices here. You can either set the rates as if they were to kick in in January 1st, even though the first bill doesn't come out until 30 days later, or you can set the rates as of February 1st, but then you have to set them at a slightly higher amount to have enough money to fund the entire amount that you're targeting, because you're going to have 11 months of the new rate versus 12. And that's the difference basically between option 2 and option 3. The additional 3/4 of a percent is to, is added for the one-month delay in the new rates. So if you don't want any retro at all, and you want to collect the total impact amount, you would charge a rate hike of 9.65%, which is what we've recommended in the staff report tonight, primarily because of the amount of feedback we've received about retroactivity, that some folks would prefer not having retroactivity, even if it meant a slightly higher rate increase. We can't, you can do that, or if one month of retroactivity does not seem that significant to you, you could use the 8.9%. Both of those, I think, are valid choices. In terms of next steps, if the council tonight does elect to authorize the city manager to issue the Prop. 218 notice, we would issue the notice to the property owners of San Carlos, and then we would hold a public hearing more than 45 days after that notice went out, which would be December 12th of 2011. And once the hearing was held, and assuming the rates were approved by the council, it would, they would be either effective January 1st of 2012, if you chose one of the retroactive options, or they would be effective February 1st of 2012, if you added the additional 3/4 of a percent. And I wanted to quickly move on and talk to some, talk to you about some of the questions that we heard from council members between the time the staff report came out and this afternoon. One of the questions we heard from several council members was, would there be savings if we moved from weekly to every-other-week recycling service? Staff believes there would be, although we would obviously need to ask Recology for a proposal. We have not done that yet. I think that, my guess is there would be some reduction, but I don't know that would be a, you know, major reduction, primarily because Recology has just started new service. They've ordered a whole new fleet of trucks, and they have other startup costs that are amortized through their tenure agreement. But again, if you'd like, you can certainly chat with the Recology folks. I see that both Mario Puccinelli and Gino Gasparina are in the audience tonight, and they may be able to give you a better answer than I on that. Some other things to consider, though, on changing recycling service. One is that if you reduce the amount of recycling in the community, some residents may be forced back to larger garbage cans and more garbage service because of the reduced recycling or service, and that, of course, would increase their costs. And also, it will have an impact on meeting the requirements of AB 341, which was just passed by the legislature and shined by the governor last week. And as you know, that raises the recycling requirement for all the cities and counties in the state from 50% to 75% as of 2020. We still have a few years, of course, to reach that target, but since we're only at roughly 63% recycling on residential, and we're in the 30% in commercial, we're clearly not anywhere near that today. So, notwithstanding the programs we have today, we're going to have to do even more programs in the future due to that new state requirement. The next question was, how much money are we raising with this rate increase? And the projection is just over $640,000 to cover the costs of the items we described. The third question was, why are the commercial can rates somewhat lower than residential? And the answer to that question is, the residential can rates include the cost of the organics and food scrap service, which are done differently for commercial. So there's an additional $2.30 a month, I think, is the number that's in the commercial, in the residential rates. It's not in the commercial rates. The next question was, does SBWMA have any financial reserves to offset the 2012 rates? The answer is SBWMA does have some reserves, certainly. They have, some of them are committed for things like bond payments and bond coverage ratios. There's also revenues for things like drops in the recycling commodity revenue. When, a couple of years ago, for example, when the floor fell out in terms of selling aluminum cans and paper, there was a reserve to offset that. And there's also a reserve to offset a loan from the City of Burlingame, $3 million that covered, helped cover the cost of the shoreway. But in terms of the procedure, in theory, the board members could approach the SBWMA board, and if 2/3 voted to use some of the reserves, that could occur. However, with most of the reserves, not all of them, but most of them, particularly the ones related to recycling revenue and bonds, there are requirements to replenish them. So, you could, you know, dip into the reserves, assuming you've got 2/3 of the members to agree, but then you'd have to turn around in, you know, about a year perhaps, and pay them back. So that'd be a short-term. From the staff perspective, again, it seems to staff that if you want to pass something less than the full total impact amount, an easier way to do that would be to authorize the hearing for the required amount, but not for the catch-up. And that's something you can certainly do. And in effect, what you're doing there is you're basically borrowing money from Recology, because they then are loaning you, in effect, the money, or loaning the rate payers the money at the prime plus 1% interest rate. Another question was, has SBWMA cut its budget for 2012? And the answer is yes. Actually, SBWMA has cut its budget over the last couple of years. Part of that, quite frankly, is now that we're in 2012, the startup costs for the new service are no longer in place. So some of the costs that we had in terms of rolling into new facilities, advertising, et cetera, have been taken out of that budget. We also have seen that the SBWMA, the board has not given the SBWMA staff or executive director of cost of living for each of the last two years, and that the program budget itself has been cut by about 10 to 15%. So there have been cuts at that level. And that, in particular, affects that line item I talked about earlier, disposal costs. That's where you would see those reductions reflected. Another question was, what is the 4% interest penalty if there was no rate increase? In other words, the entire amount was punted for a year. And we roughly calculated that 4% of the $641,000 is about a $26,000 cost to the rate payers in the following year. And again, obviously, whatever you don't fund in 2012 then gets rolled into the following year. And then finally, what was the staff expectation for rates in 2012? I think what we said to you last year, looking at the notes, was that we're in the first of four years of transition. I think staff's take is that's still where you are. That hopefully, what happens after three or four years is you'll start to see a return to the modest rate adjustments after that period. Some of the factors that you're experiencing in this period is the Allied payout, which obviously, you paid this year, so San Carlos will no longer experience that. There was a new MOU that the Teamsters entered into last year, right before the contractors switched, which, due to the way the franchise was structured, were responsible for for the first three years. So that's a factor. And of course, the continuing cart migration, which we're already in San Carlos, at least, starting to see slow down a bit. And then, obviously, the third factor, what we said to you last year, is we believe that if you fronted the Allied payment, rates could be under 10% in 2012, and we did make that, but just by a bit. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And as I said, Cliff Feldman from SBWMA is here, and also Mario and Gino from Recology are here, and you can certainly feel free to ask them questions as well. are here, and you can certainly feel free to ask them questions as well.
Okay. Any questions from council members? Mr. Walker?
Well, first off, I just wanted to, Mr. Marshers was here earlier and made some comments, and I just, I didn't do it at the time to keep us moving along, but he talked about noise in the neighborhood. That is an issue. I know I live downtown, same thing happens. And he talked about, you know, we used to have no child left behind, and he talked about no trash left behind, and he's right. Again, in my neighborhood, I see that all the time. It is a problem. I'll have some comments later, but I did have some questions based on your presentation, Mr. Mora.
Okay.
You talked about food scrap program, and how much additional is paid, about $2.40, I think you said, is added to the rate. So, how do we know the percent of food scrap participation? We've got how many, how many residential clients, and what's the percent of participation of food scrap, and how do we know?
Okay. The, well, the food scrap materials is put into the yard clipping container. I guess I'll turn to either Cliff or to the Recology folks. Do you have any flavor or sense of, of those green containers? How many of them have food scraps in them? Maybe Cliff has a.
Flavor of the food scraps are, that's good. All right, that's very good. I like that.
Yeah, I can say, that's a very good question, and short of doing a definitive empirical study, really lifting the lids, going to house by house before the trucks pick it up, there's no way to know exactly how many residents are participating in that program, because I will tell you with certainty that the amount of food scraps that enter the residential green waste, overall, is a very small amount, as far as weight goes. But from the information that we get, by and large, anecdotally, residents very well receive that program, and it is, it is well-received. They like it. As far as quantifying the numbers on a week-to-week basis, we don't have that information, without studying it specifically.
How do you know they, you're going on empirical evidence that they like it, and you're, where do you get that from?
Anecdotal.
Excuse, yeah, very good. Anecdotal.
Just from feedback we receive from residents, as well as.
How many did you receive feedback from?
As delivered to the transfer station.
How many people did you receive feedback from?
Oh, on, on an ongoing basis, I couldn't say for sure if I had received two in the last week or month or so, or five. It's just an ongoing feedback we receive from residents.
Okay, so, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Mario Puccinelli, and I'm the general manager of Recology San Mateo County. And I did want to add some additional information regarding the organics program. We do have an onboard computer on our trucks, and we seasonally, you know, the, the organics is a real seasonal commodity, but we usually see between 80 to 90% would be our average participation rate. And that's out of a customer base of approximately 7,900 accounts we have, who have the organic service weekly.
So there's 7,900 customers in St. Carlos? Is that what you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying there are 7,900 organic customers who have, there's probably more residential customers, but of the residential base, there's approximately 7,900 who have that service. Not everyone subscribes to, some have opted to, to opt out of the organics program. There's probably a handful, so the numbers aren't exactly apples to apples.
Excuse me, I don't get it. Everybody was given a little pail.
That is correct.
Okay, so, and I guess the idea of that pail is you keep it under your kitchen sink, you put foods in there, and then when you take your can out, you, you take the pail and you dump it into the can.
Correct.
Correct? And then you take the pail back inside and put it in the kitchen sink.
Like that.
Right? So what you're telling me is you have 7,900 customers in St. Carlos who avail themselves of the pail and seem to use it?
Correct.
And somehow, you have a sensor on your truck that lets you know when food scraps are going in?
We have an onboard computer system that tells us how many customers that truck is picking up on his particular route. So, well, not everyone puts it out every week, so we will, so it varies on, on the seasons.
Seasons.
But in the fall and in the spring, we'll see a lot higher participation, probably closer to 90% in St. Carlos.
Of the 7,900 customers?
The 7,900.
How many customers do you have in St. Carlos, residential?
It's, it's, I don't know if it was on the screen.
Yeah, Brian, Brian, 600 cans. We do about 12,000 boxes, so it's probably, it's probably.
Right in that range.
Mario, but that doesn't include multifamily, correct?
That is, that is correct. It does not.
But multifamily has those pails available to them?
Yes, but it's, it's a little different, because we all go into one gigantic can, so it's one can, but you're not counting the 50 units that go to that can.
That's in some cases, and in some cases, not. I live in a multifamily, and we all put cans out.
It all depends on how many units.
Down Walnut Street, you know, where I used to live, you know, years ago, in the 80s, further down on Walnut, that's a multi-unit building, I mean, it's like 12 apartments or something. They put out cans.
Well, it's a little different for those of us who live in much larger.
Yeah, okay, so, so I guess what I'm asking of the, of the customers that use cans, be they multifamily or be they single family, how many customers do you have?
I don't have the multifamily stats right off the top of my head. I was focusing on the residential.
So we have about 12,000 residential, and we've got about 7,900 who avail themselves at times of the food scrap program.
The 7,900, yes, I can confirm that.
At times, they use it?
At times.
Right. Okay. Very good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would think the other thing, too, to point out in terms of people who use the organics, is the fact that we're seeing as much cart migration, most of that is from the organics.
Then, you had a slide up there where you said there was budget cuts, and then you very quickly said something about a percentage.
Right. I believe, and I'll check with Cliff, because he's on staff, I believe what we said was that the budget cuts at the SBWMA budget in the program area were something on the order of 10 to 15% over the last two years. He's nodding yes.
Is it 10 or 15, or which is it?
I believe, I believe it was closer to 15, but I don't have that exact number.
Mr. Mora, can you reiterate?
Closer to 15, he's saying, for the program budget. Well, come up if you'd like.
And what Brian referred to is, is the, the recycling and public education program budgets. We, we reduced those, you know, the last two years, about approximately 15% across the board, which was a variety of programs.
Excuse me, that's one item in the budget, or that's the entire budget?
It's, it's a variety of items in our budget, specific to the programs that we implement.
What about your entire budget?
The, the entire budget, there were some, as, as Brian mentioned, some very big reductions. For example, the public education program was by and large taken out of this year's budget, because those expenses went away after we implemented the program. There were some big one-time hits related to the fact that the transition to the new service providers has transpired.
But what was the, so, the entire budget? How much did it reduce?
I'd have to, I don't have that number right in front of me.
Okay. Staff costs for SBWMA, cut, not cut, went up? What did it do?
Um.
Two years, some sort of thing.
Yeah, that's, okay, I understand that, no COLA, but there could be no COLA, and then you do step-ups for, for employees, so don't give me the COLA numbers. We did that at the city also.
Well, we also eliminated a position at SBWMA as well, so there's real reductions there also. I, I think another thing to point out about the SBWMA budget, and it was affected in, again, it, this is reflected in the disposal line item, is where you see the SBWMA budget through these rates, is it did increase from 2010 to 2011 because of the one-time costs, and then it went back down. So part of that, as Cliff was saying, was due to the rollout, and part of it is due to the fact that there has been a real reduction in headcount at SBWMA, and there has been no COLA, and there have been the, the annual year-to-year increases that you'd seen in the past in that budget, and other agencies have not been seen for two years now at SBWMA.
Do you have a percentage?
A percentage?
Yeah. In other words, like, for instance, at the city, when we get our budget, we can look at staff costs. So we can separate out, and look, here's our staff, staff costs. In fact, we just went through cuts, and we asked for a 5 to 7% reduction across the board, which you and the city manager and everybody worked on, and we achieved it, right? We, we made a 5 to 7%, depending on the department and so forth, we made cuts. And we cut salaries, and we cut benefits, and, and we saw a percentage of cuts. So, did SBWMA see that or not?
There was a reduction in personal costs. I don't have the budget with me, but we can certainly get you that number.
Okay, thank you. I have some other questions, but I'll yield for now.
Okay. Mr. Ross?
Yeah. Thanks. Brian's patient, spent some time with him this morning, some of those questions, and those two slides were mine, so I'm in pretty good shape right now.
Okay. Mr. Roselli?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Mora, you mentioned that the interest savings would be $26,000 if we didn't raise any rates at all.
Correct.
But if we just raised them half, then it would be $13,000. In other words, instead of 9.65, if we rated them 4.8, or if we just raised them 3.6. In other words, what we're talking about is if we, if we only did a 5.3, it would basically be about approximately $14,000 or $15,000 to 5.3 being about 56%. I'm trying to put that into dollars, because percentage, I mean, we may say, okay, what's going to cost us $10,000, but it's also going to not have to raise the rates. That's why I was bringing that up.
Mr. Roselli, can I ask a question, just so I'm?
Sure. But if, so, say we, one of Mr. Ross's hypotheses, we do half, so the interest only costs us $13,000, but that a half we didn't raise gets added on to next year's.
That's right. It rolls over.
So we could, instead of maybe having like a 5 next year, we could have an 8 and a half, or whatever it would be.
Yeah, it rolls over. But I'm just saying, this was highlighted, that we're going to have to pay this money. If it's, if it's $100 million, that's a big number. If it's $5,000, maybe it's not so big. You know, I'm just trying to figure out a way maybe to flatten these things out. Seven, when we talk about, if I can ask, the 2011 estimated revenue reconciliation, you call it the true-up.
Yes.
Okay? And then we have the 2012 net collection revenue at 2011 rates, which is part of the 5.3, although it's a negative in our case.
Right.
What's the difference? Because isn't the cart migration in the true-up also that 2011?
My understanding is the difference between the two, and I'll, I'll ask Cliff to comment as well, if I have this wrong, is the first number is an estimate of the amount of shortfall we have between the amount we.
I apologize. The first number, which is the first number?
The first number is the collection revenue, or the so-called net collection revenue.
Okay, up top, okay.
The one up top. That's the difference between the amount of money we thought we would collect, if everybody stayed in their rate category, versus the amount we did collect, because some people moved down.
So cart migration's in there?
Cart migration. My understanding of the second number, and he's nodding so far, so I must be doing good, is, is that that's the number that is the year-to-year change in Recology's actual costs in St. Carlos. In other words, they have gone up more than we would have expected. And part of that, as you probably saw on the earlier slides, we continue to get more garbage accounts. This year, we have, even, even outside the cart migration, we're still getting more garbage accounts. Obviously, our total costs are up, and we saw costs of, I believe it was organics went up, and so that's, as I understand, is that's what the second number is, is that?
Why wouldn't that be under contractor's compensation? I'm just trying to understand apples to apples.
Right. I think the, the true-up that Brian's mentioning, which in, in the head, it all looks like this?
Doug, please don't do that. It's 3.6%. 2011 estimated revenue reconciliation, he calls it a true-up. What does that take, what is that in? What's in that?
That is, that is revenue that's needed outside of the base costs, and what that is for are a variety of services known as the attachment queue, or the unscheduled services that are outside the base or the fixed costs. For example, backyard service fees, bin lock charges for commercial accounts, overage fees, there's a variety of services that the company charges for that are outside the base revenue that needs to be included into a future revenue stream in order to capture it.
But we pass through that. It says, he says, we pass, pass it straight through. There's no cost there. It's 1.67%. We pass it through. That should balance.
That would be close.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so now there's, so who's on first? I'm confused. There's no, there's no, there's no cost for, for Q.
No, the, the, the revenue needs to be included to the rates. This, this won't be an annual recurrence. Once you catch up with this, it's unlikely that the number of backyard service customers or the bin lock charges are going to fluctuate on an annual basis, but the company needs to have that built into the rates in order to charge for it.
Mr. Mora said, we charge 1.67%, and it's, we charge for it. So it's a, it's, we, there's no cost, there is no cost.
Okay, right. That's, that's the increase from the year-over-year, but because of the way the contract was structured, we haven't yet included the amount of this until now, because it has been unscheduled. We haven't known what it was. It hasn't been quantified until they started providing the service in 2011. This is our first estimate of the aggregate number, which is embodied in that roughly.
So what you're, what you're saying is the true-up is made up substantially of Q, of measure Q, or whatever, avenue Q, or whatever the hell Q is.
Yes, because this is the first time we're quantifying it, because it's the first time those services.
It's 3.6 this year, but we're estimating 1.67 next year?
No, the 1.67 is the CPI increase they're allowed to tack on to the original amount. So for example, you had a franchise agreement that started on January 1 of this year. The cost for backyard service, I'll just use arbitrarily, was $20. The company is entitled to increase that along with a variety of their other costs in accordance with the CPI. So that $20 goes up 1.67% for next year's rates.
Next year. And we're using 2011 in this one?
We're using 2011.
Because we're going backwards, we, what it cost us is 3.6% last year.
What, what it's going to cost us in 2011 is 3.6%, you, you have two options. You can either adjust your 2012 rates to capture that.
I understand what we, our options are, if I honestly do that. I'm trying to identify what this is. So what you're saying is it's 3.6 for 2011, 1.67 for 2012?
I'm saying, well, here's where it gets kind of confusing.
Kind of, yeah.
The, the, this is the first time we're quantifying it in 2011 to apply to either 2012 or 2013 rates. The company is entitled to that 1.67% escalator on it, which is the, the base cost in '11, increase it by 1.67% per item, and that's what gets applied to 2012. So it's, it's kind of confusing. The 3.6% applies to the aggregate amount that needs to be captured. The 1.67% applies to the CPI increase on the individual items.
I get that, okay. Does green count, the, the big green bins, we put all our greens in our compost, our, our.
Organics.
Organics. Does that count as recycling?
Yes.
Okay, so when we're talking about recycling 75%, that's what we're talking about? Okay. What other questions have you got?
Hey, Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Cliff.
So the, and the, part of this may be discussion, but just looking at the number in the.
We got to get a staff member for you.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Mr. Mora?
Mr. Mora, would you like to try to pay attention to me, please? Thank you. I get, I can get that anywhere. So, the proposed rate change on the 20-gallon is plus $1.59, and the proposed rate change on a 32-gallon is plus $1.54. And then the other thing we're talking about, the cart migration, sort of trying to balance for that, although that was our carrot two years ago, was, hey, if you, if you, if you divert more to the organics recycling, you'll be able to move from a 32-gallon can to a 20-gallon can, and I know there'd be net savings in that based on our current rates, that would offset the amount of the additional cost of what the organics was. That was the argument before council in 2008. So, this is partly a comment, but did, did you set the proposed rate? So this is partly a comment, but did you set the proposed rate? Is that something council can talk about tonight?
I think it's certainly something the council can talk about if you wish, yes.
So, and I'll get around to what a proposal might be, but so the minus 2.7 percent migration cost, what's the dollar figure that that represented? You said earlier on, there was an increase in collection cost, and the second point was that there was a minus 2.7 percent migration.
Let me see which line I...
And we're talking about an increase of $641,000, so I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the cart migration. It's our carrot. It's what we want, people to go to the smaller size. So, you know, proposed rates, council, just real quickly, while they confer, the thing I'd like to, I'd like to keep the 20-gallon can as a carrot, as something that's good, and maybe reflect that in our new proposed rates, that it gets more expensive with the more garbage you have.
I was going to, excuse me, Mr. Lewis, I think it's $2.54, not $1.54.
Is this $2.54, okay.
It's $26.30 to $28.84.
Bad math, okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I make a couple observations there. First of all, I think that prior to the organics and prior to the new service, all of the cities, including San Carlos, had set the rates progressively with the assumption that just simply doing that, setting the rates progressively, would encourage people to go to smaller can sizes. I think it's fair to say, looking at the results, that there really wasn't much movement simply through the rates until we did the organics and until we more recently did the weekly recycling. Those are really the two events that, to use an expression, moved the needle. You know, the rates themselves, we hope that there was more of an incentive than we actually got. I think the other observation is if you keep the 20-gallon rates lower, as we showed in one of the earlier slides, you can certainly do that, but the effect is going to be that as more and more people move to that, you're only going to need a higher rate increase later because your, those two rate categories are already underwater.
Or you put costs into other areas of people that are generating more garbage?
Yeah, you could certainly charge businesses more, you could certainly charge the large containers more, but as you saw from the slide, people are rapidly leaving those categories, I guess is my point. So, you know, to me, as I look at the shifts, it's sort of like a good news, bad news situation. On the one hand, our recycling goals and our environmental goals are clearly being met, and it's very exciting on that level. On the other hand, from the need to collect enough revenue to run this program, it's challenging. So it's kind of a good news, bad news tale.
Right, I guess I've also been under the impression, perhaps it's just a general impression, that these two things wash, right? It's like the recycling company can make money off of this additional recycling that's going to help offset garbage rates. Certainly the impression we've put out.
And that's included in the numbers, in particular the disposal number. The revenue from the recycling is in there.
Right. And it's just hard not to get irritated, and I hear from people in the city, it's just irritating, the garbage rates just keep going up, and keep going up, and keep going up, and keep going up. And we don't really see definitive projections, and each year, we get a little bit lost in, you know, 117 different details for why it has to go up, and it's tough for us to tease apart all these different things on a council basis. I realize there's a certain amount of trust in SBWA, but boy, do I understand the frustration in the avid citizen, because even when we get all the reports, it's tough for very strong financial people up here to sort of go through all this stuff, and it seems endless. It really seems endless. With the council member Griselli's point from earlier, I was hearing over the 10-year projection that we're anticipating this to flatten out over a certain certain time. Is that right?
That's the intention, yes.
The intention. Why can't we put together a 10-year projection with a range of assumptions that we can on a yearly basis come back and say, based on these criteria, that are a little bit easier to tease apart than the way they are in the current report? Is that possible?
I suppose it's possible. I'll turn to my friends from Recology and SBWA to address it.
And how can we turn to the people in our city and say, we have no real idea. We're going to get up and get, you know, 17 different reasons why it went up again, and we're going to try to do our best to sort of sift through it. Can you just give us like most businesses do? Here's our estimated cost, here's how we're actualizing on those costs, and so we can turn to our citizens and say, here's why, and there's good reasons why.
And we're completely in tune with the sensitivities related to kind of the nebulous nature of why rates are going up, and we try to diffuse a lot of these issues. And not to belabor the point, but just to talk about the cart migration issue. We can't definitively put our finger and say, this is exactly how much your rate's going up related to residents' behavior, which is cart migration. Because if you look at the, if you recall the slide Brian put up there, he showed roughly a 3.2 percent change overall in the accounts in a 12-month period. Well, you don't know if 20 percent of those accounts happened in month number one of 12 or month number 10 of 12. And that's how you would calculate the revenue loss associated with the behavior change. So there's a lot of moving parts over the course of the year. In order to cut to the chase to your question, Councilmember Lewis, we could put together a projection of that nature, and it would be within ranges, and it would be within tolerable ranges, but there's going to be a lot of asterisks and a lot of footnotes at the bottom qualifying those. That's something we'll definitely work on, because I completely concur with you. I think that that's something that needs to be done moving forward. And because of the nature of unwinding a cost-plus franchise agreement, which is a very different, very different animal altogether, and the services that were provided to a fixed-price contract of weekly service, the upgrades to the facility, there's a lot of things that are now coming into place, and we knew that this transition would take two, three, four years. And I can tell you with certainty that next year, there will be another bump above the CPI because of contractual reasons, and then the year after that, it would be pretty much fixed for years four through 10, and moving forward after that, the future years, on CPI, pretty much across the board.
Okay. Well, with all due respect, we are failing to make it clear and understandable. And so what I would say is that you all need to do a better job at making it clear and understandable. For me, to hear that there's only 266 cart migration issues to a 20-gallon can this year, and yet cart migration's come up, as we refer to it on this process, it keeps coming up, cart migration, you know, we hear that more than anything else, it's 266 out of 7,900 accounts, and we're talking about $641,000. It's giving way too much emphasis for where these costs are coming from, and it's tough to read through this report and even understand the proportional weight. So I'm just saying that you all need to do a better job at making this clear and easy to understand. This is garbage. It's, you know, you guys should be able to put this out in an understandable way. So, council, the one thing I'd like us to talk about when we get to it, thank you, is what Councilmember Griselli said before. If we can get a 10-year projection that shows that this flatlines four years from now, then it may be worth holding just a gradual rate increase over the course of the next eight years of 5 percent rather than going up 10 percent next year, or nearly 10 percent, knowing that it'll even out over time because the rates are going to come back to flat, from what I understand, in about four years. They should start to even out and get flat toward the last four years of the contract. It would be a reason to do a, you know, 5 percent over the course of the next eight years, as opposed to 10 percent, you know, for the next four years, and then zero. I worry that the promise is things are going to flatten out, but every year, we're going to have this discussion. I would love to see a 10-year projection, some commitments, and so we can actually each year understand how it's actualizing in a more clear and concise way. So that's my two cents. Thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Grokka.
Just a comment to what Brad is saying, and I have other comments, but I just want to comment to that one thing. One thing I learned from being on the fireboard, Mr. Klein will understand this, when we, on the fireboard, when we gave guys, I think it was a 2.5 percent raise in six months, and then the second six months, another 2.5 percent raise, and we did that for three years, that really adds up. That 2.5 and 2.5 is not five annually, it's more than five. And so, yeah, it's compounded, as Mr. Royce just said. So one of the problems I have out of the gate with this proposal is we're talking about 9.65 on top of last year's 18.5. So if you add, you can't just add those two together, which I did quickly on a piece of paper here somewhere, I'm looking for it. So it's, that's, if you just add it together, it's 28.15 percent, but it doesn't work that way. It's more like a, annualizes about 15 or 16 percent increase. So I just add, I just wanted to jump in there on what you said about, you know, if we could project out, because what we're doing now is all over the map, and it's very frustrating.
Okay. Mr. Moore, I have a couple of questions, if you guys don't mind.
I have a couple after you.
I'm sure you do.
I'm sure I do. We have garbage questions.
Am I supposed to be on the other side?
No, no, no.
So, Mr. Moore, I have a question. So Mr. Grokka brought up last year's increase of 18 percent.
Mm-hmm.
And that...
18.5.
18.5, at that point, it's, and a lot of that included us paying off Allied, correct?
Correct.
So when is Allied's account going to be paid off?
Allied's account is going to be paid off, I believe, by September of next year, using the money we raised this year. In other words, there won't be...
Okay. So part of that rate increase, do we know how much of that 18.5 is going to pay off Allied?
From last year, it was roughly half.
Roughly half, exactly. I know the answer to these questions, guys, I'm just asking them so people know. So roughly half was used to pay off Allied. So when does that disappear? If it's September, we're no longer paying off Allied.
Right.
We're still collecting that rate.
Right.
Where's that money going?
That's right, as of 2012, it's going into the baseline revenue, as I understand it. Is that correct? Yeah.
So the money we raised to pay off Allied will then be used to pay Recology?
Correct.
And we're still going to see a rate increase on top of that?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm pointing out that we, half of that 18 percent raise was to pay off Allied, and then we're going to swing it over to Recology, and next year, we're still going to see a rate increase, on top of the fact that we're swinging over 9 percent to them?
For 2012, yes. And again, obviously, the hope, I guess that's the right word to use here, is that once we finish out the cart migration, some of these other issues, that when we get to, the only piece of the rate is the index, which is supposed to be around 2014 roughly, we should then be in the range of 3 and 4 percent.
So hypothetically speaking, then, I mean, and this, you have to bear with me on this, if we were to see this time next year, a 5 percent increase, but that also includes the 9 percent that we were raising for Allied that gets carried over, isn't that essentially a 14 percent increase? Because we're no longer paying Allied with that money, we're paying Recology.
Right.
So that number for next year is kind of a misnomer. It's not really truly in effect what we're giving extra to Recology, we're giving them even more. But we've just taken the money that we raised for another cause and sliding it over without having to increase rates.
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure everyone knew that. And then, two other questions. Do you have questions on that, Mr. Grokka? Okay, I didn't mean to confuse anybody, but that's one of the things that's been bothering me. Do we have historical data on how much this cost five years ago, 10 years ago?
We do, sure.
Because I'm wondering, it's $18 right now for a cart, right? 1803 for a 20-gallon cart?
Mm-hmm.
When did that start 10 years ago? Do we know? I mean, is there a way at some point someone could get me that information? Because I'd like to see how much...
I don't have it off the top of my head, but we could certainly get it for you, yes.
Because originally, 5 percent a year, historically, I mean, how did we slowly get to this $18?
Well, I think historically, the rates have bounced around a lot. I mean, in the cost-plus days, I mean, there was a, there was a rate year about, I want to say, three or four years ago, where the rate in San Carlos was zero, there was no rate hike, because we actually raised more money than the costs. But it has, it fluctuated quite a bit, and I think the hope here is once we get past these first three or four years where we're dealing with all of these shifts of the rates, paying off Allied, et cetera, that once we get to the index, the hope is that it flattens out, and indeed is hopefully more predictable than it was back in the cost-plus days.
Okay. A couple other questions. Are there any communities that make people pay the true cost of this?
I don't believe there are, no.
Okay, because I see that it costs $43.59 to pick up a 20-gallon cart, and we're only charging 18, and there's a lot of uproar about charging more, but you don't know of any communities where you pay the actual cost.
We have the tables for all the communities. If I remember it correctly, I believe of the 12, there may be one or two where towards, you know, and it's frankly similar to us, whereas you get into 64 and 96-gallon service, the costs are close.
PA.
East Palo Alto, PACE? Okay. And then my last question is, we're looking at these things as a county-wide level, and we have people who are 52 percent, and you have us somewhere towards the bottom third. Where are we as the Bay Area, the nine counties in the Bay Area? How is San Mateo County stacking up?
San Mateo County rates tend to be lower than other counties, and I think part of that has been that historically, we've had less service, and so we haven't had the expense that other counties have had. But we did a, we did see a survey, I think it was about a month or two ago, where it compared rates as of the summer, and most of the agencies in the SBWA were below the average. I think even our rates were a little bit below the average.
But is that because we, do we currently still have less service?
No, we don't as of this year, but we did it as of, say, last year, for example.
So we're going to have to wait until the true-up, until we can actually compare ourselves to the other counties, because they've been getting much more service for a longer time than we have.
Right.
Because we don't really know right now what this service actually costs us, we won't know for a couple more years. I mean, isn't that the theory behind the true-up?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Griselli?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. Puccinelli, I have a couple of questions that maybe you might be able to answer. It says total of contractor's compensation, 7.3 percent. Of that, do you have an estimate of what the labor component of that is?
No, I do not. I'm sorry, not in front of me.
Okay. Let me ask you another question. You pick up, we pick up now every week, we're able to pick up the greens carts, and we're able to pick up the, those are the large green ones, as I call them, and the blue ones, the recycled ones.
Correct.
Do you have any ideas, any numbers of how many green carts get picked up every week, and how many blue carts get picked up every week? Look, where I'm going here is because personally, and again, just my house, that the recycle one gets a lot of use, and a lot, most times, it's pretty full. The greens, maybe every other week, sometimes it's every week, but a lot of times it isn't. And I'm trying to, do you have any data on that?
Again, as mentioned earlier, it's probably, the organics is seasonal, so we'll see the 80 to 90 percent participation rate. The recycling rate, I don't know it off the top of my head, I'm sorry, but I would say it's right around that same percentage.
So, because my neighborhood, I'm looking, and I don't see the big green cart, so what you're saying is every week, and again, I apologize, I should have asked it before, every week, at least 80 percent of the people are putting out the big green cart?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. But we don't, we don't know if it's filled or not, but they're putting it out.
Right. Well, we know, it's probably not filled, but in order to participate in the organics program, you need to put it out every week. So folks, it's the law, because there is protrusible material in that organic cart now. It's just not yard waste.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
So...
No, not protrusible, the law. So are you telling me I'm violating the law if I don't put my greens cart out every week?
You, well, you, well, I don't want to see you violate the law.
No, seriously, I'm trying to understand what you're getting at.
The program, there is a state law, and maybe Cliff could provide some additional background on that, but we, you do have to, because there is wet garbage in the organics that we can process, it does need to be picked up weekly.
But if people don't put it out, you can't pick it up?
That is correct.
Okay, so...
And that's why, though, folks who do put it out are not always filling them up.
Okay. So if I don't put it out, the garbage police are going to come to my house?
That is correct.
Do you know who's coming?
I'll just clarify, the reason for that is because this was the stuff that used to be collected in garbage when the green races every other week. So what, you didn't have to put your garbage...
I don't have a problem with why you do it. I just, I didn't realize I was violating the law.
You are.
Seriously. I mean, and I, I will bet you that no one knows that.
Well, it's just, it's similar to garbage. There's a state law, Health and Safety Corps, that requires putresible garbage to be collected to provide the service weekly.
Understand. And whether I had one, whether I had one bag or whether I had 10 bags, every week, my garbage was picked up. Okay? So, but I didn't have to, I just had to put one cart out. Now we have three, so we have choices.
Right, and the point is now that some of those materials that were solely collected in the garbage, or now...
There's a lot of scofflaws on Crestview, then. There's a lot of scofflaws on Crestview then. And there's scofflaws all through this.
But maybe any maggots.
Yeah, it could be, yeah.
But just to answer your question quickly, the labor costs are roughly half of their annual cost operations.
Okay, great, thank you. So of the 7.3, approximately 3.6 ballpark, half of it is labor, which is not the contract that Recology made with labor, but with, that Allied made with labor. They have no, no, no choice in this matter. Is that correct?
By and large, yes.
Yeah. Basically, it's, it's the contract that was made before that we're paying for now. In 2013, there'll be a new contract, then it'll be their responsibility of what the costs are.
Exactly. Because at that point, when the, when the existing contracts are amended or expired, then it's tied to CPI irrespective of whatever's negotiated in the contract.
Sure. I just wanna, and thank you, Cliff, I just want to make one comment. I got an email today from a, from a person, we've probably all got it. This is a citizen who, who has watched apparently her garbage rate go from forty dollars to eighty dollars. Now, she has, she basically said, I don't understand. And I think, as you said, Mr. Lewis, most people don't. They're getting a lot more services, they don't realize it, and it costs more to do all those services for, I mean, there's three trucks, I'll be honest, I honestly thought when we had this contract that there'd be one truck that would show up and have three bins. And we'd go, one, two, three. There's three trucks. So there's a lot of different costs that have come in to this. She had no concept of that. She just saw her garbage rate going up. And so I think the frustration level, as Mr. Lewis said, is the, and I'm not saying the public outreach was poor, but, but there's a lot of people that just can't figure out. And again, we're having difficulty trying to figure it out, how complicated it is. And I understand why, because of the, the transfer and so on, but I just want to make sure that we're not blowing smoke up here, because we wanna, you know, cause trouble for you guys. It's unfortunate that the perception is getting ahead of the reality of what, of what some of these costs are. So anyway, thank you.
Do you have any more questions?
No, I, okay. Mr. Grokot? I thought you had a couple left, right?
Yeah, I do. And I, I need a clarification on the, the green bins, the army green bins. You're saying 7,900 customers out of 1,200 use those, is what I'm hearing. And you don't really know, of the ones who use them, how many are putting in just yard waste and lawn clippings and so forth? And how many are actually using them to include what you call wet waste or food scraps? We don't, do we know? And that's what I was asking before. Do we absolutely know the participation of San Carlos residents who use the food scrap program?
As I, as I responded earlier, short of going out and lifting each and every container throughout the city on a weekly basis and quantifying that, there would be no way to know. And we have not gone through the expense of doing that study.
Okay. Thank you. And I don't know who to, who would take this question, but I am curious, there's a SBWA board, are those board members paid?
No, the SBWA board members are not paid.
Okay. And those are staff people from various cities, just so the public knows.
That's correct.
And one of the questions, I guess, was asked earlier that I had about Recology, Recology charges based on travel time and number of lifts a truck makes on its route. So ostensibly, if we were to cut service to every two weeks rather than every week, there would be savings. But you don't know what that is, according to your slides.
Yeah, there'd be some savings, and again, we'd have to get a proposal from, from Recology.
Why are we not seeing a savings? If we're sending less to the landfill, I don't see anything that shows that we get savings from landfill.
That we're sending less trucks to the landfill and more recycling trucks to the landfill and there's, is that your?
Well, no, no, my point is if we're putting out less garbage, you've told us we're putting out less garbage, we're putting out more recycling.
Correct.
Material, that doesn't go to the landfill. Goes through some kind of recycling process, I would.
That's correct.
I would think. So if we're sending less garbage to the landfill, where's the savings?
Well, I would imagine that the savings or the, the change in cost is probably explained by the fact that the landfill costs are only going up, I think that in the report, it says 1.3 percent or something like that, whereas the collection cost is going up much higher. Is that, Cliff has it?
Right. I, I think the easiest way to look at that is, is that the, the overall tip fee increase, which embodies the commodity revenue that's generated, the SBWA program cost, the financing of the bonds for Shoreway, the operation of the facility with South Bay Recycling, all of that equates to about a 1 percent increase for San Carlos year over year. So all, everything related to processing, the SBWA commodity revenue goes to offset those costs. And the disposal costs are also embedded in that. So a reduction in disposal, because we received, picked up roughly 20 percent less residential garbage with a 30 percent increase in recycling, all of that is embodied in what we call the disposal expense, or whatever that tip fee increase would have to be. So all of that is baked into the disposal expense.
Tip fee increase has to be? Why does it have to be? That's what I'm driving at is, see, you know, and this, this is what, you know, Mr. Griselli mentioned, a letter that we got from a resident. And, and that's kind of what they're saying is, no matter what we do, rates go up. We're doing the right thing, we're recycling, we're, we're separating our trash and we're working more as customers, because we have to put it in this one and that one and that one over there, and then drag them out to the curb and put them facing a certain direction and so many feet apart and have, make sure no one's parking in front of our house so that we can do this. And we're doing all this, whereas used to be, you could leave your garbage can in your side yard and they'd come pick it up. Or you could just kind of put it in your driveway up near the garage and they'd come pick it up. And now we have to do all this work, and even for the benefit of recycling more and putting out less trash, you're telling me, thanks very much, your rate on that portion is going up 1.3 percent. There's not a lick of savings in here that I see anywhere, except Mr. Moore mentioned about a franchise fee increase being zero.
Well, the alternative would be much more dramatic if the commodity revenues we were not achieving, that would not be revenue that would offset our costs. And if disposal expenses were increasing, that would be additional expenses. So the alternative to not recycling at the levels we're aspiring to and achieving would be far worse rate-wise than what we're currently enjoying, being partnership with the owners of Shoreway Facility. So there are significant benefits to recycling, reducing disposal expense.
And one last.
That is shared across the board amongst all the agencies.
One last curiosity here. How much is, I noticed in the paper, it says Recology has a contract with Singer and Associates for a public relations firm. How much is that contract?
I would have to defer that to Recology.
Okay. Thank you. If they could answer that.
Vice Mayor, I don't have that information available. Singer and Associates has, has a long-term relationship with Recology out of our San Francisco operation, so they're helping us out.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, and this will be for you, Mario.
Okay.
It's been a long time since I lived at home with my, well, maybe not that long, but long enough since I've lived at home with my parents. So I don't, when it was Allied Waste, and that's, I haven't lived at home for about 10 years, give or take, it's all been multifamily since then, we recycle much in the fraternity, so let me go back to what I remember. You had three recycling bins, correct? You had paper, mixed paper, whatever it was, bottles, and then cans?
Correct. Three 18 gallon tubs.
Yeah, and then you had, you had a trash can.
And a trash can. Sometimes two.
And at some point, when I came home visiting from college, this big green thing showed up, where we got to put our grass that we cut. So that was the way it was under Allied Waste. So there was five, there were three little things, a big green one, and your trash can.
Correct.
And then now with, again, so I live in a multifamily, so we have gigantic trash cans and then the recycling. Now you have the single stream recycling, which is the blue one.
Well, all three of those commodities.
Go in one.
Go in one.
Okay, and you have the black, which is the garbage.
Black is garbage.
And you have the green, which is the compost.
Correct.
Okay, so there's less things to do now.
That is absolutely correct.
The pain is you have to space them.
Space them.
And they don't come, they don't come near, because I used to, as a kid, I'd forget to take the trash out. And our garbage mail would actually come and save me occasionally.
Right.
So that's the way it is now.
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to get, because I was confused about, I thought it had gotten simpler because of the single stream recycling.
Thank you, absolutely.
Okay, so that, that's why I wanted to make sure it was clear, that it has gotten simpler to recycle, but now it's costing us because we're doing such a good job at it.
Right. And, and, and the proof's in the pudding, recycling is up 30 percent.
Is there any way we could ever get the numbers from yourself or SBWA of what it would cost if we weren't doing this recycling? Because we keep hearing that, that the costs are dramatically different if we don't do this. But we never actually get numbers for that. Because, I mean, it would make it easier to make it more relevant, as Mr. Lewis said, to talk to people and go, look, if we got rid of recycling, we stopped doing recycling, we'd have to hit you with a 40 percent increase every year. Or, you know, is it only 1 or 2 percent difference? I think it makes it more real to people.
I'll, I'll, Brian.
Well, I take a step.
Yeah, yeah, and I should mention one other thing about the notion of getting rid of recycling or even cutting it back. I should point out that three years ago, we were under a good faith order by the state.
Well, I, I know whether it's illegal or not, that's not my question. I know it's illegal for us to do that, but.
We could be in the daily city zone where the state tells us what to do.
But we keep hearing that as a justification, so I'd really like to see the numbers that show that. Because if you keep telling us, well, if we weren't doing this, we weren't doing these things, it would cost us so much more, but we never get the numbers on how much it would actually cost us. So it, it doesn't ring true to a lot of us unless you can give us some data.
I hear what you're saying. That's something we could.
Can I ask one more question? So part of the idea of doing organics, as I understand it, was to reduce the amount of methane in the main garbage. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
So are we measuring that?
Are we measuring that?
That was another metric, I was thinking, we're saying how, how successful is the organic? You might be able to say, well, we've reduced methane gas by X, and that might be a correlation.
That, that's a great point, I'm remiss in not pointing that out earlier, because the, the key behind the organics is that, that 23 times, 23 times carbon dioxide is what is achieved when you recycle that. In other words, methane is generated from the decomposition of organics in the landfill, and that's 23 times more potent than carbon dioxide as a greenhouse gas. We can quantify those numbers, and a lot of agencies that have climate action plans do a lot of that work on the side. That's not something that we've done on an agency by agency basis. That is something that we could definitely provide you some statistics on, as far as what your impact is as a community on greenhouse gas savings.
Yeah, and that would be great, because that was part of the reason we got behind it in the first place.
And another question to add to the overall cost, and then we'll get to Mr. Lewis, is we were told that this was gonna slow the fill-up of Ox Mountain. So Ox Mountain's rates aren't rising as fast as, as they supposedly would if we just kept filling it up, correctly? Or correct?
We currently have a, a contract at Ox Mountain that goes through 2019.
Okay.
After that, suffice it to say, all bets are off as far as what we might be paying in the future.
Would we be able at some point to see a comparison to the rates at Ox Mountain compared to the rates in surrounding landfills, so we could quantify that?
Yeah, and a big, a big component of that is gonna be the freight.
Yeah.
In the distances, driving the material there as opposed to the most convenient and closest location. So we can't, we can't provide a survey of.
I, I can imagine that, the rate has a lot to do with it. Could you guys show us the difference of how much it would cost for us to go to Ox Mountain to the next landfill? And, because that, that's another key to this, is we want to still be able to go to Ox Mountain. And once that fills up, we have to go another 30, 40, whatever miles it is to the next landfill, and then we have to pay that freight fee.
We could do that, but the tricky part in that will be, is in what rate do you assign at another landfill? For example, another community couldn't use all rate in that survey at Ox, because we've negotiated that rate years ago and it's a very preferential rate. So what rate should we use? A public gate rate at another landfill? That wouldn't, might not provide an apples to apples. We could do it, but.
But you could just show us the freight rate, just alone right there, what that would do to rates if, if we weren't doing all these things.
I'm saying, we, I'll put together that survey, but it's gonna have, it's not gonna be definitive.
Okay. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, just, well, we talked a lot about the green bins, just quickly about the, the blue. We, we had a lot of gain of value there, because we had three bins, now the glass and the paper and, and the cans all go in that one big, and it's big. People like it, because it's big, it's got wheels, and it works well. Where we lost, though, and it hasn't been brought up, is the inefficiency, could be 20, 25 percent of cardboard. Because I see a lot of people on my street, before you used to get cardboard, you flatten it. When you flatten it, it gets to down to nothing. Of course, there was a manual effort to pick up. Now, people get lazy, or it's hard to flatten, and so you only have half of a blue bin, but it ends up being 100 percent full, because those top two or three boxes from Costco go on the top. And why flatten them? I got the room. So I do think when we talk about changes in, like the blue bin, if we could go only every other week, I think there's an educational role in how we train our users. And that said, we're doing more work and more work, well, maybe we'd have to do more work, because two or three boxes kill the efficiency on the blue bin.
That's a good point to the Recology people, and for us multifamily people, anytime someone buys a new TV, we all lose the recycling for that week, so it's a, it's a bit of a pain. So with that, we have public, unless you have any more questions, Mr. Griselli?
No.
Okay. We do have one public speaker slip from Glenn Gowanow, and then if others would like to come up and speak after, you can fill out one after Glenn and just give it to our city clerk. Thanks for staying with us tonight, it's been a long one.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank you all for your earlier vote. As a citizen, and as a member of the community that's gone through this garbage issue with the rest of you, it seems like, I, I guess my biggest question would be, who put together the request for proposal for these guys? And we've got two-year period, we've got 30 percent increase, basically. And I like to know how that contract was put together. I mean, I really question that. I mean, that doesn't, I, I was a professional business man almost my life. I dealt with contracts. I wouldn't keep my client base long if I overran 30 percent in a two-year period. And so I really, I really question that. I think that the issue before us, though, is whether or not you have an open hearing and hear from the public on this issue. And as a member of the public and a member of this community, I think the people deserve to be heard. And I think you're gonna hear a lot of what that gentleman said earlier and what Mr. Grokot has said. I had garbage dumped in my driveway and said to the driver, please pick it up. He pointed to the number on the, on the truck, says, call them and complain. And more importantly, it's become a navigable hazard on my street. These bins are in the, in the street, more than they are left back where they were originally put. I'm on a hill, on a very narrow road, and it's really a, a safety issue. It's gonna be a matter of time before somebody gets hit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Should I turn this in over here?
Yeah.
So I'm on the public record.
And then just introduce yourself, is there any?
Oh, sure. Hi, I'm Mark Hurein, I'm a San Carlos resident, I do vote here in town, you've all gotten emails from me. I thank you very much for addressing the questions here tonight. It's obviously a very complex and sometimes convoluted issue. You do the right things, price goes up. You do the wrong things, price go up. So at this point, I think you're asking all the right questions, making all the right moves, I appreciate that. The only question I would have is if we all got bigger bins, would the prices then go down? Because we could then pay them more money? There's a lot of questions that need to be asked, and I'm not sure if I understand the methane question, because compostables go away anyway, right? We're all cutting grass and methane gas is created naturally, so I don't understand whether it would be, you know, blowing holes in the ozone that way, but there's a lot of complex issues with garbage. And I wish you good luck, and I will be attending future meetings of this, because I had no idea there was this much information included in garbage collection, but I appreciate your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Moore, there was a question about the RFP process, if you could just give a 30-second rundown on how that happened, that was prior to my time, so I don't want to.
Okay. The, going back, I believe it was 2005 or '06, we were having problems with the private, the prior provider, Allied Waste, and so there was a desire on the part of many cities, both the elected officials and the residents, to go out to RFP, because the, the service had not been to RFP in this county, as far as I could tell, as long as I'd been here and even longer. And so the city manager of Foster City, guy named Jim Hardy, was the one that made And so, the city manager of Foster City, guiding Jim Hardy, was the one that made the motion back in 2004 to begin looking at doing an RFP, and so that's how that process started. In terms of what we looked at in the RFP, is there was a discussion about, do we ask for the exact same service we have today, or do we add, add enhancements? Very similar to the process we went through with fire, for example, in this city. And one of the things that we heard over and over again back then is this discussion we had earlier. People who moved to San Mateo County from other counties were used to getting more service, they were used to having, as you point out, fewer containers, they were used to having single stream, they were used to having food scraps, things that this county had never had. And so, we went to the councils, and we asked them not only about going out to RFP, but also, do we ask for the same thing, or do we enhance? And in 2007, this council had a presentation from Kevin McCarthy about that question. The recommendation was to go out to RFP, but also for enhanced services, and his estimate was that if we did go out, then in the first two years, the costs would go up by 15 to 30 percent. Now, obviously, in some cities, that has come to pass, like this city, and other cities, the cost has been higher than that. And ultimately, all 12 of the agencies said, "Yes, we want to go out, and yes, we want the additional services, and yes, we understand the cost could go up by up to 30 percent over two years." So, you know, I think some of this was foreseen, that if we enhance the services, the costs would go up, we would get a little closer to our colleagues in the East Bay, and based on what we've seen so far, that's come to pass, and in fact, as I mentioned earlier, even with the increases we've seen, we're still lower cost than a number of the cities in the East Bay.
So, thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any questions, or can we go to a discussion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Grisilli.
Getting, prefacing it with the fact that, again, Mr. Moore has said that it's $26,000 in interest cost if we didn't raise the, raise our rates a penny. I, I make a motion that we go option number one, we raise our rates 5.3 percent for the next year. Just rough math here that I'm doing, it's gonna cost us another $11,000, $11,440 and 22, no, about $11,440 in interest cost.
Can I ask you one clarifying question?
Sure.
Would those rates be retroactive to January 1st?
January 1st, because we don't want all your phone calls coming in. Yeah, no, I was gonna make it to January 1st. But 5.3 percent, and, you know, as Mr. Lewis said about trying to flatten this out, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping, oh wait, I heard that from you guys, hope, that we can, we can kick this so that we know we're gonna have to come up with the other monies, but hopefully next year we better, and certainly the third year, after the, the allied thing goes away next September, it should, it has to flatten out a little bit, God willing, and also the migration is, is to me gonna, gonna flatten out. People are gonna eventually, to me, that's gotta settle down. I mean, the first year, it's just got to. So, anyway, that's the motion I, I would make, 5.3 percent, retroactive January 1st.
Is there a second for your motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll do some discussion. Mr. Grokot, do you have something? So, you're grabbing your mic.
Yeah, I do. I guess first, just some general comments. This whole thing is, is really upsetting to me. I, I understand, you know, I read the piece in the paper. We're not talking big dollars a lot of times. Like, if you look at the 20-gallon can, you're talking a couple of bucks. So, $24 a year. But it's the principle of the thing, that we took on this new contract, and rates keep going up. Obviously, in some people, as this letter reflects, it, it has been more than just a couple of bucks. And I'm sorry, Mr. Royce and other council members who think this is easier, it is not easier. It is more difficult. I used to take out trash with the, the little bins, and other than having to pick up a, you know, because I would stack the, the three bins on top of each other and carrying them all at the same time, and I wished then that they had wheels, but other than that, it was easier. And my city didn't look like Garbageville every week. And now, what we see is garbage cans all over the place. They, as this gentleman said, they don't end up where residents first set them in the morning, they end up tossed over, laying all about, trash all about. So, in my opinion, it's gotten more difficult, and service has reduced, because, like I say, you gotta put it out in front, you gotta put two feet between the bins. In my neighborhood, a lot of people park on the street at night. There's no place to put these darn things. And then they stay there the whole day until people come home from work and put them away. Better service? I don't think so. So, actually, I was prepared to make a motion, I don't know, to, to actually hold off on this action. Let's look at what it would take to reduce this to, to every two weeks instead of one week, and see what kind of savings we would get. And let's get some answers to these other questions, and I was gonna add, you know, I brought comments from the article in the paper today from other council members, Corlin Firebuck, saying, "Let's see a real accounting of the monies." And we asked a number of questions, I asked a number of questions here, and the answers I got was, "I don't know. We don't have that information right now. We don't know." I would like to know. I would like to know before sending this to the public to vote on. Do I want to have a hearing, as this gentleman again said? Yes. But I want to have this information for us and for the public before we do that hearing, because we're not gonna hear it at the hearing. Some of the other, one of the other questions that Mr. Lynn from San Mateo asked is, these profits, where do they go? Because over there at SBWMA, I, from reading the article in the paper, it appears that it doesn't just stay with Recology, but it ends up at, let me put my glasses on so I can read this. San Mateo Councilmember David Lynn recently questioned whether Recology should get a 90, 90.5 percent operating ratio, which guarantees a percentage of profit based on actual cost of service. SBWMA owns Shoreway Environmental Center, state-of-the-art facility operated by South Bay Recycling, a limited liability corporation. Since South Bay Recycling is an LLC, it can pass its profits through to its partners, which include Potential Industries, Inc., Community Recycling and Resources Recovery, Inc., and Crown Disposal Company, all based in Southern California. And Mr. Lynn asked, "Are we essentially subsidizing garbage service to Beverly Hills?" I don't have that answer. David Lynn doesn't have that answer. None of us have that answer. I'd like to have that answer before we have a hearing. So, I guess I'm just gonna go ahead and lay it out there. I would put a motion on the table that we do nothing tonight, we get some answers, and we also look at switching our service, since we don't know how many people are using food scraps. If they want to use food scraps, let them pay for it. If they want garbage service every week, let them pay for it. But we could cut down truck running and also save the environment, because let me tell you, three trucks running through the neighborhood every week is not good for the environment. And let's look at that going, switching from once-a-week service to every two weeks like we used to have, and let's see what that is, and then let's do Prop 218. So, I know that was a long, a lot, a lot of words, but that would be my motion. Let's hold off.
Is there a second for Mr. Grokot's motion? So, you know, second, the motion does not move on.
Mr. Mayor, through the chair, I, I want to amend what I said. I'm sure Mr. Rubens would correct me if I made the wrong motion, because basically what we're doing is we're setting a hearing date. We're not raising, and, and no, he was just chomping at the bit to get me on that, but I, but I woke up. So, what I, my amended motion would be that we set the recommended review of solid waste, which we've done, and issue the attached notice of hearing for increased rates in the amount of 5.3 percent for both residential, commercial, and then pursuant to a Proposition 218 hearing on December 12th, 2011.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any more discussion?
One more item, if I may.
Mr. Grokot?
Mr. Lewis, you want to go ahead?
Well, I was just gonna say, because other council members chimed in, I, I don't think every other weekend recycling's a good idea, and I'll just, because I won't be a part of the December 12th discussion, I, I think that our recycling rates will start to really come off if we do that, number one, and number two, I mean, in my area, those bins are full every week, with broken-down cardboard. So, I'm just saying that I wouldn't go to, I wouldn't suggest that.
I wouldn't push it so fast that it might not be part of the December 12th. Madam Clerk, isn't that our reorganize?
It is.
So, we're gonna have garbage on the night we're bringing new people into the city council?
Correct.
Maybe we'll do a special meeting, and I'll let Mr. Lewis vote one last time before we bring a new guy in on this. Just saying, we haven't counted chickens yet, Brad.
Okay. We'll get after it.
Mr. Grokot?
Yes, one more thing I want to state, pretty much just for the record, and it's included in the rates, and so it's part of it, and I think we should take it out of it, is street sweeping. I brought this up before. Today, I went out and rode my bike, and I went up Graceland. Graceland is a street with no curbs. Graceland receives no street sweeping. Heck, I live right down the street here, I have a curb, and I've never seen a truck go by and sweep my street. I'm all the time out there with my own broom and stuff, and picking it up and throwing it in the army green bin. When we first did that, when Mr., it was Mr. Garvey's idea to, to do that, when he was Chair of the SBWMA, and it was $60,000 out of our general fund. Now, it's $108,000 for that service. People are paying for that service out of their garbage rates, and they ought not to be, because they're not receiving the service. And in my mind, I know the, the city attorney has chimed in on this, and he said it's not illegal, I think it is. It should be paid for out of the general fund, which property owners already give money to through sales tax, through their property taxes and so forth, because it's a service that the city receives at our parking areas, at our curbside of parks, like Burton Park. And you gave us a report on how much that costs, we've never had it in front of us, as I asked to have, so we could decide if we want to continue to do that or not, or at least pay for what we receive as a city out of that service, and true it up a little bit, and it's never been on this dais, even though I asked for it. It went in a council report, a council newsletter that Mr. Moore wrote, but it never came to the dais. And I think it should, and I also think it shouldn't be in these fees, and so I'm stating that for the record.
Okay. Mr. Royce, do you have anything?
Oh, yeah, just a couple of quick thoughts. Just comment on Mr. Grokot's thought on streets cleaning. We do need to investigate that. There's a lot of streets that don't get cleaned, and how the cost is allocated, and how the frequency is, that's definitely an opportunity in the future, but I don't think it should affect what we're doing this, this evening. Second out of three thoughts is, this is a tough issue with garbage rates, because of all of the major changes that we've made in the last couple of years, our customers have been very happy. From Scott Marsher's comment, you know, you know, this morning, or this, this morning, a couple hours ago, wasn't that long ago, to some of my own personal observations of the startup service over the past year. It's been a rough year, and people see some of the benefit in it, but they also see some of the problems. And so, we're not there yet. Overall service in San Carlos is mixed, and as it gets down to rates, I could support the, the proposal as given. The one issue I have is being, from a financial point of view, being conservative, being conservative is you want to make sure you charge enough, and that true-up, I always like to be ahead of the game, that we're making sure we have enough to fund what the operation is, so, but other than that, yeah, those are my thoughts.
Okay, I'm, I'm just gonna add a couple before we vote. Unless, do you have something, Mr. Grisilli?
I just wanted to make a comment, and I, I understand what Mr. Grokot is coming at in a lot of different ways. The difficulty that I see with garbage is that it's not an individualized thing. We can't say, you know, "He fills his bucket up so, with food, so we're gonna charge him X, and I don't," because you can't go to 7,900 or 8,000 doors and say, "What would you like to do?" It's just unfortunate. But that's a concept that it's, it's basically, everybody pays. Now, whether you want the food program, which I voted against, as I remember, or whether you want the hazardous waste program, which I voted against, as I remember, that's another issue. But those were my points. But the point is, they're out there, they're available to everybody. It's unfortunate, but there's no other way these gentlemen can pick up garbage. It's just, it doesn't work. It has to be a general thing, and, but I do hear your frustration. That's all I had to say.
Okay, and I want to quantify things, as Mr. Grisilli, I'm gonna vote no against your motion. And the reason is not because I don't believe the rates should be increased, but I believe we should increase them to what we really should set them to, not, not the kicking the can down the road. When it comes to me hearing, you know, looking at a fresh new, because we won't have alternatives like that, but while we have these alternatives, I don't believe that's a, a proper alternative. But I understand, reading newspaper quotes, reading emails and stuff, it's, it's a lot of fun for politicians to blame Recology or blame SBWMA and stuff, but some of those quotes, they're coming from politicians who were told it's gonna cost you this much more when you go to a new company. They understood that, and then they also choose to run up a bar tab on a former company. So, you know, with it all being said, you know, you have people saying, "We need a true accounting." Well, the reason you're going up 37 percent is you never paid your bills. That happens. You go, you run up a bar tab, eventually the bartender's gonna go, "Well, now, yo." So, if, you know, it's, there's, when you look at that graph that was put up by Mr. Moore, there's a lot of towns in this county who just didn't pay their bill, and now it's[1651.04]